We're ready to call this meeting to order. The Laguna Hills City Council, Laguna Woods City Council, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Connors. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Moore. Mayor Pymotemecary.
Here.
Mayor Lee. Here. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to ask Roz to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. I am going to reorder our presentations in ceremonial matters and make the commendation for Roz Rhodes's 90th birthday the first thing on the agenda. So, Madam Clerk, would you read the commendation, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Laguna Woods commendation, Roz Rhodes. On behalf of the City of Laguna Woods, it is an honor and a pleasure to extend this commendation to Roz Rhodes on the occasion of her 90th birthday, which was celebrated on April 8, 2025. Congratulations and best wishes for many more joyous years to come, dated this 21st day of May, 2025.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Roz, would you like to say anything? Into the microphone.
It is, thank you so very much for this honor. You know, it's good to see us the way we are because I remember we, Christopher, you were a little baby when you came. It's wonderful to see all you sitting in this chamber. When we started in one of the rented things in, you know, I guess what you would call it, the palaces. And we didn't have a computer, we didn't have anything. And Leslie King was the city manager at the time. And to see us grow and have this beautiful chamber and we do a lot of things to make it really a city hall, it's my honor to be here today. Thank you.
Hey Roz, don't sit down yet. It's usually our practice, when we give birthday commendations, we ask the person, what is your secret for a long life?
Well, I guess volunteering and doing things for the city, for the village, and your churches, and all the clubs, and doing the things for other people. And it gives you a great feeling. So, I'm glad to see Anne McClary. I remember being out there without hats or anything on the corner, and I urged her to run. She says, I'll never make it. Honey, you will. I'll tell you, you will, and she did. And many of, many of the other people that are here did a great job. And Christopher, I'm so glad to see you as city manager. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Would any of the other council members like to make any comments?
I would just like to say, thank you and happy birthday. Happy belated, happy birthday. Thank you.
I think that I almost have an emotion about it because I know what a supportive person you and Marty have always been. If somebody was to turn out, I, you would be there. The two of you are so dependable and so supportive of the positive things that have happened in the city, from supporting water to supporting the city itself. And of course Marty served on the city council. The two of you, Roz, I can't imagine anybody, you two both, you're, you're, what do I want to call you? You're models for us. I'm just so pleased to have known you and seen the many things that you do. And you're right, your service is right up there, isn't it? Thank you for all you've done.
I would like to say something, too. I have known Roz and Marty since, since we moved in here over 20 years ago. Roz has been a building captain and is still a building captain for the Garden Villa Association. And when we were doing the recycling program, Marty was on city council. And when we got a, they got a grant for 50 bins and I got to place them and we, that was so wonderful. That was the beginning of all the recycling here in Laguna Woods Village. All those bins have a little bit of Marty in them. And, and they encouraged me to run, too. They nagged me unmercifully until I did run. And so I just, I want to thank Roz for taking the time out of her day to be here today. And happy 90th birthday. Thank you. Okay. And we'll, we'll have one more proclamation and then we'll do pictures. So just wait until then and we'll do your picture and then we'll, then you can go ahead about your day. Okay, it's been moved. It's moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. So the next proclamation is Older Americans Month. Madam Clerk, could you read the proclamation, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Laguna Woods, Older Americans Month, May 2025, proclamation. Whereas Laguna Woods is a unique community with an average age of 75, and whereas throughout their lives, the residents of Laguna Woods have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations. And whereas the City of Laguna Woods recognizes that older adults are trailblazers advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, and paving the way for future generations. And whereas the City of Laguna Woods is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older adults and helping older adults to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible. And whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social involvement, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, and ensuring that others can benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Now therefore, it be it resolved that the Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim May 2025, Older Americans Month in the City of Laguna Woods, and encourages the recognition of older adults and the people who serve them as being powerful and vital to the fabric of our community, dated this 21st day of May, 2025.
And I'm going to ask Mr. John Pointer to please come up to the microphone and speak. John is the president of our California Senior Legislature and the Joint Rules Committee, and has been and is a very active member of the senior community and responsible for a lot of proposals getting passed. John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize Older Americans Month and the contributions of older adults. This proclamation is a meaningful reminder of the invaluable contributions older Americans make to our communities every day. Honoring their wisdom, resilience, and lifelong commitment to service is not only appropriate, it's essential. The California Senior Legislature commands the recognition of Older Americans Month. This proclamation should serve as a reminder to continue our commitment to robust support of aging populations, especially those most vulnerable. These are challenging times for many older adults and the organizations at the city, county, state, and federal levels that provide essential services and support of older adults. This is a great opportunity to remember the importance of social programs that provide financial and medical support to all of us in this category. Celebrating older adults must also include protecting the services that sustain them, like Medicare, Social Security, nutrition programs, and affordable housing. In closing, again, I want to acknowledge the importance of this proclamation and all the contributions older adults make to this great country. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Would any of our council members like to say anything? Yeah, around.
Since all of us here on the dais and almost everyone in the room is an older American, I think we can, I think we've already applauded for ourselves. But it's good to record to have this proclamation coming right after Rosalyn Rhodes because she is, she is typical of what older Americans can contribute to the community. So, thank you for reading, for speaking to the issue.
I'll move the resolution.
Go ahead, Annie.
Okay, I would like to say I've been honored to be an assembly, elected to be an Assemblywoman for the California Senior Legislature. I've served on the Health Committee. We just had our senior rally in Sacramento and they do it virtually now. It's a, an amazing group of people that with all, they have health conditions, too, and they schlep all that equipment with the oxygen tanks and the wheelchairs and the, everything that they need through the Capitol in Sacramento to talk to legislators, to get bills passed, to get their proposals passed. The only proposals we write are ones that directly support senior, seniors, and we get to use the same ledge aids that the legislature uses and we sit in the same seats that the legislature and Senate in our Capitol use. So it, I'm very honored to be part of that group and so glad that John could be here today to accept it. And so, would anyone from the public like to speak? Seeing none, okay. Excuse me? Go ahead. We do live in a senior community and I'm so proud of our community because when you see the kinds of things that people do and they're very active and Roz is a perfect example, we are all older senior citizens. I was a little shocked to recently see in San Francisco, they were talking about limiting people voting for office due to their age. And in our community, that would, I don't think that would be very popular because we, we feel that we're pretty active and we are. We're active not only with technology, we, people who are active with both the two computer clubs, active with the video club, active with all kinds of other community groups from bridge builders to pickleball. And I, I feel like our community is a very good example of what you can do as you grow older, when you stay active and as Roz said, you volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Great, it passes. Okay, we're going to take a very brief recess to do pictures and then we'll go on with the rest of the agenda. In session. The next proclamation is for drowning prevention awareness period. Madam Clerk, can you read the proclamation, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Laguna Woods, drowning prevention awareness period, May through August 2025. Proclamation. Where, whereas in the United States, unintentional drowning has been a concerning rise with over 4,500 deaths each year from 2020 to 2022, marking an increase of 500 annual fatalities compared to 2019. And whereas drowning is a leading cause of injury-related deaths among children under five in California, with approximately 60 children in this age group losing their lives to drowning each year. And whereas for every child who dies from drowning, another seven receive emergency care for non-fatal submersion injuries which can result in long-term disabilities. And whereas drowning can occur silently and swiftly, often in as little as 20 to 60 seconds. And whereas drowning can occur in as little as two inches of water, including inflatable and built-in swimming pools, spas, bathtubs, buckets, the ocean, lakes, and anywhere else there is water. And whereas the themes of the Orange County Fire Authority's 2025 Water Safety Campaign are always watch the water and never swim alone. And whereas the Orange County Fire Authority's ABCs of Water Safety Program is intended to increase public awareness regarding proper procedures to prevent the needless tragedy of drowning. Now therefore, it be it resolved that the Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim May through August 2025 as drowning awareness prevention period in the City of Laguna Woods, and encourages all residents, business, and homeowners associations to become partners in preparedness by increasing their knowledge of proper safety measures in drowning prevention, dated this 21st day of May, 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Makin, can you play that video from the fire authority, please? One of the good reasons never to swim alone. Thank you very much. Would anyone like to say anything to address this?
I would.
Go ahead.
Actually, I appreciate the video because that was going to be my comment is that adults, especially older adults, are just as much as high risk for drowning as younger children are. And so it's really an opportunity for us to acknowledge that we always need to be safe around water.
Pearl, would you like to, do you have anything to say?
Well, you know, when we think about drowning in the pool, we always think about the little children. But as we get older, we become children. So I think we have a same risk. So we, it's great that we bring the awareness to all of our senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Connors?
I think we're fortunate here in Laguna Woods that our, our public pools, our community pools are pretty much always staffed with a lifeguard, with someone who is paying attention to anybody who's in the water who may be getting into trouble. And so we're fortunate in that. But anybody who goes outside or anyone who has grandchildren visiting or whatever, I hope this will help them be aware.
I think, of course, not swimming alone is critical, but the other one is to, is water safety, learning water safety and how to handle yourself in the water, not being frightened if you're in the ocean or in a swimming pool because that's part of it. And I, I'm pleased to see, at least in Orange County, I can only speak for Orange County, many, many classes on water safety and, and they're well attended. We start early with very young children and it's critical. Thank you.
And a second? Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Excuse me? Yes, there are, would you like to speak to this? I, I know they're here for the, for one of our agenda items, but they're welcome to speak to this.
Thank you. I just have a statement I'd like to read if I could.
Sure.
Well, good afternoon. My name's Matt Levek. I'm a battalion chief. I'm your battalion chief here for the Orange County Fire Authority. I'm one of three that service this area. And on behalf of the Orange County Fire Authority, I'd like, I'd like to thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager Makin, and city staff for the opportunity to accept this proclamation that supports drowning prevention and awareness. We have all heard the phrase, children drown, drown without a sound, and unfortunately, that phrase is very true. Playing in and around water can be a fun family activity, but it can also be deadly. Drowning is a leading cause of accidental death for children under the age of five. Unfortunately, I've responded to several drowning incidents throughout my fire service career. I will never forget these tragic incidents and how they impacted the families and the communities involved. And drownings continue to plague Orange County. In 2024, Orange County reported 91 drowning incidents, 45 of which were non-fatal and 46 of which were fatal. Of those drowning incidents, 37 were children under the age of five. 27 were adults aged 50 and older. In 2024, I'm proud to report that Orange County reported zero drowning incidents in the community of Laguna Woods. Typical drowning locations include pools and spas, the ocean, and unfortunately, bathtubs in our own homes. Your Orange County Fire Authority operations and professional staff remain actively involved in educating our community on how to prevent drownings. We continue to reinforce the ABCs of water safety, which include, A, active adult supervision, designating an adult to watch the water and supervise all water activities at all times with, when anybody's inside the water or inside of a pool. B stands for barriers, installing fencing around pools and spas, and the use of self-latching gates to prevent any unintended people to get into the pools and get into trouble. And C stands for classes, learn to swim and learn first aid and CPR. Additionally, the OCFA offers water safety and drowning prevention presentations to businesses, civic associations, and other community groups. For, for more information, you can visit our website at ocfa.org. And lastly, I'd like to just ask that, let's all do our part to ensure that these preventable accidents don't continue to occur within our communities. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the proclamation and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Would any, anyone else from the public like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none. Okay, before we come to the next proclamation, I have a statement I want to make. So I have something to say before this next proclamation on Jewish history is read. I tried reaching out privately with my feelings in an email to Ms. Moore who placed this proclamation on the agenda as soon as I was made aware of it. But here it is on our agenda anyway, so this is hard, but I have to speak up. I have no other way to let my fellow council members know my thoughts or feelings. This was my email to Ms. Moore. Carol, I'm reaching out because I want to express my feelings about this item you want to put on our next agenda. These are my concerns. First, this is a religion, and if we recognize one, we'd have to recognize all of them. I'm very against the idea of mixing religion and government. Religion is, and should be, a personal thing, or even no religion. Second, there's a lot of anti-Semitism all over the place right now for lots of reasons, old and new. old and new. It concerns me deeply that students, domestic or foreign, who protest, usually for Gaza and the Palestinians, are being targeted. Some are even being disappeared and having their student visas revoked. It's said that some Jewish groups are behind that, giving names of those students to ICE. I support protest, especially by students on campus. Maybe sometimes they go further than I would like, but I support their right to protest and express themselves. The "not in my name" comment comes to mind when they are being targeted by Jewish groups, and I'm afraid it's leading to an increase in anti-Semitism. Some people do not need a reason to feel that way, but as a Jewish person and an Israeli, I don't want to give them more reason. I want students from other countries to continue to come here and feel free to express themselves and share their cultures and ideas with us. Third, the whole issue of Gaza and the war between Palestinians and Israelis is a fraught one, no matter where you are on the issue. Many people wanted us to have a proclamation for a ceasefire. Many people are condemning Israel for the way they're conducting the war. We all have feelings about this, sometimes mixed feelings or changing feelings. I believe it's a minefield, and I have no desire to get mixed into Middle East politics in our little city, just too divisive for no clear benefit. People still feel strongly. A resident mentioned it just last meeting, and I don't want to give her a platform to condemn us on. She's not alone, though. There are too many sides to that issue to open it up for discussion. I still have family there and have a hard time expressing my feelings. I see so many sides to that painful issue. This has led to a big rise in anti-Semitism and anti-Israel fervor. We celebrate many countries and cultures with our proclamations. Please, let's stay away from religions. So many wars have been fought throughout history because of religious beliefs. When Chris mentioned this agenda item to me, I was very dismayed, and the only thing I can do about it is to ask you to please do not put this item on the agenda. I can see no good come out of it, but I can see much bad and danger, not to you, but to Jews in our community. Please pull it. I hear too many comments now about Jewish leadership of clubs and the resentment it is stirring. I'm afraid this could add to that, and being Jewish myself, too many would say I am only doing it because of my personal religion. I do feel very strongly about this, but it's up to you. I have no power to prevent it from being on our agenda. Just hope it won't. So that was my email to Ms. Moore. Now, I have some comments I want to make. These are my own personal feelings, experiences, and thoughts. People can disagree, but at least everyone will know how I feel and why. First, the man who reached out to have this put on the agenda, Josh Schaefer from Jewish Community Action Network, reached out to me, too. We've spoken several times in the past. He represents a national Jewish organization. He has no ties to Laguna Woods, and he doesn't live in Laguna Woods. Do we know everything his group does? Are they part of reporting student protesters to ICE? I don't know, but I do know I turned him down. Second, I believe religion is and should be a personal matter, and I believe Judaism is a religion. I don't think it's appropriate to single one out from the diocese for a city proclamation. Many people do good in the village, of all different religions. I believe in recognizing good works, but it's more appropriate, in my opinion, through commendations. A commendation would be appropriate for the Jewish Food Festival coming up, recognizing all their good work, for example. Also, when President Bush signed the original proclamation in 2006, we were a very different country. We have become much more polarized, and anti-Semitism is much more pervasive. This is not his original proclamation and will do nothing to bring us together. I think doing this proclamation at this time will make one group of people feel good, but will stoke more anti-Semitism and resentment in the village. Third, someone said Jewishness is more than a religion, it's an ethnicity. I'm not sure I agree. In my family, we had a couple of inner marriages, and the spouse converted to Judaism. In one case, it was a Japanese girl. Did her ethnicity change? No, she's still Asian, just her religion changed. I had another sister-in-law who was Protestant, then converted to Judaism, then became born-again Christian, then Catholic, then joined another Christian sect. People change religions frequently, but their underlying ethnicity does not change. European Jews and Middle Eastern Jews have different ethnicities, but they share a religion. When I lived in Israel, the differences were striking. Food was different, even what people laughed at was different, and how they treated each other was very different. But we shared a religion. Somali Jews and Russian Jews also had their own ethnicities and communities, but the religion was shared. The anti-Semitism I'm feeling here in the village is directed at my religion. Scrawled swastikas and armbands are against Judaism. I'm okay differing with others on this point. As I said, these are my feelings. Making this public statement is not easy for me. It was not something I chose to do, but there was no way to talk to my fellow council members about my thoughts or feelings, so I was left with no other choice except to do this publicly. I wanted to let them know why I am not supporting this proclamation. If I feel this way, others also feel this way. As I said, these are my opinions and feelings, and I will not be told or made to feel that I should not feel this way, or I'm mistaken to feel this way, or to just stay quiet. With that, we will move to the next proclamation.
Pardon me, I think you took the time to make a statement, and yet you did not read anything that I wrote in response, nor did you read the responses, because I did reach out. I didn't ignore you. I did receive your email, and I acknowledged it, and I think it was very politely done, and you did not, you stated "I cannot stop you." That's what you said. So to leave out what I said and what the others said is to be remiss, in my estimation, because I did respect your feelings, and I didn't move forward without reaching out. And I'm disappointed you showed and displayed only one side of that story.
I would be, I would be very happy to read your emails if you would like. Out of your privacy, I didn't read your emails, but...
Well, and this is not the time to drag everyone through your histrionics. I think that I respect your feelings on this, but I think other people have other feelings, and to make this a drama is totally out of line. I think we should move forward, but I think we should let them respond, because they clearly stated to me and convinced me. I listened to your statement, and they convinced me otherwise. Thank you.
You were not honest with the person you reached out to, and they said they would have felt very different had they known who asked you not to put this on the agenda.
I did not tell them it was her, because I was trying to respect her privacy.
Madam Clerk, would you read the proclamation, please?
Thank you. City of Laguna Woods Jewish American Heritage Month, May 2025 proclamation. Whereas the history of Jewish Americans in Laguna Woods is inextricably tied to the greater story of the United States. And whereas Jewish refugees have fled oppression and discrimination for centuries and have sought sanctuary in the United States, California, and Laguna Woods. And whereas Jews are an ethnic people who share a culture, language, ancestry, and identity, and remain connected through Judaism, the ethnic religion comprising the ancient beliefs, practices, mythologies, and laws of the Jewish people. And whereas the Jewish community has helped define the character and values of Laguna Woods through the presence of a Jewish synagogue and other temples that meet locally. And whereas celebrating our community's diverse heritage helps foster understanding of the challenges faced by those around us and inoculate us against hate. Now therefore, it be it resolved that Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Laguna Woods, and encourages reflection on the accomplishments that Jewish Americans have made throughout history dated this 21st day of May 2025.
Thank you. Councilmember Connors.
I have a comment.
Okay. Councilmember Lee.
My concern is that the Jewish American Heritage Month, are we honoring the cultural background of Jewish heritage? Last month, I understand, it was a Arab Heritage Month. And I guess that falls on the first day of spring. Now, is the May, we're celebrating the Jewish Heritage Month as an ethnic group? Is it mixed with a religious group? I don't know whether we are giving a proclamation to celebrate, to honor the cultural heritage. If it is to honor their cultural heritage, I have no problem, because in this, in our village, there are more than ten different languages are being spoken. Our village has become so diverse, and when we deal with the diversity, our main key is to include every group. And is Jewish heritage group is one of the ten or twelve that we have in this community that we like to honor? Are there more complications? Because to me, we're just talking about the cultural heritage. If anybody wants to celebrate Korean Heritage Month, I would say they are celebrating honoring our culture. I am not quite, I don't quite understand whether it was, it meant a religious group. I don't know. That's the area that I'm not sure about. If it is a cultural group that we are honoring, I'm for it. But when we do that, I like to think that we will take every cultural group that we need to honor, if the group wants, want us to recognize their culture. And it becomes so diverse, it will take not only education, but it needs an effort to recognize all these groups. And I think it would, it's something that if the city wants to get involved, I think that would be fine. But I don't know, I don't understand the religious part of this.
It's not part of it. Did you see, ever see Fiddler on the Roof? Did you ever see Fiddler on the Roof?
Yes.
Hey, there's one example. Usually, an ethnic group has dances, that's very traditional, and music that's traditional to their group. And I think anyone in the room would agree that there is music that we associate, the Klesmer music. I certainly associate it. So I, to me, it makes sense. But if you want to take it off into some other area, that's your choice, but this isn't about that. Thank you.
You know, there's different ethnicities among Jews. The Ashkenazi and the Sephardic.
I'm going to call point of order, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to chime in on this. We're having a discussion across the dioceses, and it is for comments, not discussion. So I think if you have a question, then you address it, and then, but this is not a discussion, it's an opportunity for the councils to weigh in.
Yeah, well...
So, and I defer to the city attorney to keep us on track here.
So this is an agendized item. The council does have an opportunity, if you want to do it through a format of each providing comments, or if you would like to do it more as an open-ended discussion.
Okay.
That's up to the council, but it's an agendized item, so you are able to have a discussion if you'd like.
Councilmember Lee made her, her statement, it didn't need to be responded to. So if we're going to all make, we can all make comments, so not a discussion.
Okay.
Okay, then it's a discussion.
I also have one last comment, is that I don't want anybody to get confused as if we're taking a political stand, because that's not something we're doing.
Okay. Thank you. I wrote down my comments, and I'm so glad I did. First of all, I support, I fully honor the tremendous impact Jewish Americans have had on this, on our nation. What gives me pause is the complexity of identity in this context, is the recognition, recognizing a particular religion, that interconnection of cultural and faith makes it more layered, more layered than other heritage recognition. And that complexity is what causes me to have some pause and reflect on this. And still, my reservations are far outweighed by my belief that this proclamation, as it is written, serves a greater good. It serves as a way of including everyone. And as someone from a marginalized group, I know the importance of inclusion. So it causes me pause that the word "religion" is even in here, but it also, that pause is far outweighed by, like I said earlier, the intent behind this proclamation is to bring about unity in the community and recognizing a group that has contributed tremendously to our community.
I have to pay attention to what our mayor has said, because she is the only Jewish member of our council, although I think you are not a religious observant Jew. But she, Sherry has lived on a caboose, she has served in the Israeli army, so she knows more than, certainly more than I do, about Jewish identity. But our council has had a long tradition of honoring all the diverse elements in our community. Last month, I think we honored, or sometime in the recent past, we honored the Arab Americans. We have done Black History. Now we are doing Jewish Americans, and we honor other groups, too. We have a Pride proclamation coming up, as well as our older Americans that we just did. So the function of these proclamations is not to take a stand on political issues or global issues, it's to pay attention to who's in our community and what their contributions are. And the Jewish people are a valued part of our community. I'm working on getting a commendation for all the Swiss, but it hasn't happened yet. I think the language in this proclamation is a little, is inartful, and I think there are dangers in accepting wholesale a proclamation presented by an outside agency, and we might have avoided some of this if we'd asked our staff to write something.
Actually, our staff did.
But I, regardless of my misgivings, I think what's critical is that we support our Jewish residents, and so I support this proclamation.
I have one more thing to say. There's a difference between cultural proclamations, racial proclamations, like AAPI, Asian Pacific, Swiss, Korean, these are countries. They're not religions. You can be ethnically Korean, but it's not a religion. So, or we recognize Pride Month, or Black Heritage Month, that's also not a religion. So Jewish is a religion. So there's a difference when you're talking about cultural things and country things. Yes, it's very nice to want to say nice things about the Jewish community, but doing it through a commendation for good works like we've done for the Baha'i, like we've done for any other religious group. I just don't think this is a good time right now. There, there is anti-Semitism in the community. People not, may not want to talk about it, but this, this will be good for a small group of people, but at the expense of others. Anyway, I've said my piece. I am not for this proclamation at all, so... Would anyone from the public, I have someone, Dahlia Bromberg, would like to speak?
Actually, I did not have an opportunity. Actually, I did not have an opportunity either. You did not ask me. And I, this was presented to me, and I did think it through. I disagree, and I think we, you can have differences of opinion on how you look at things, but I think the way you tackle it, I think the way you chose to do it, I'm disappointed. I don't think that was a proper way to do it. This, it has nothing to do with the country of Israel, has nothing to do with the Gaza War, and yet I noticed it was brought up. Why? It wasn't on my mind, you brought it up. So my feeling is, yes, there is antisemitism, and I'm beginning to feel it from people who should know better. Thank you.
Excuse me. The reason I brought it up is because, because of the Brown Act, I'm not allowed to speak to my fellow council members. So because I wrote an email to Carol, I was not allowed to speak to my fellow council members. I was left with no other alternative except to do this in public. It wasn't something I chose to do. And the reason I brought up Israel was the, that was my email to Carol, that these were the reasons that I believe there's so much antisemitism. It's still in the news right now, and you can't divorce one thing from the other. So, and I would be happy to read her emails to me if you want, but I won't. So, did you want to say something, Ms. Bromberg?
Pardon me, but you're responding to each thing I say, and I have no problem with that, that if we're going to respond to each other, let's make sure everyone gets to respond. Thank you.
My name is Tal Fox, I'm not Dahlia Bromberg. I think we'll speak shortly. I appreciate all of you taking the time for this consideration. Carol Moore for presenting this proclamation to the council. I am not a Laguna Woods resident, but I, I do want to make that clear, but I am grateful for Jewish proclamations being made. I am a Jewish woman, I'm an Israeli woman, and I want to make a point that not everything is monolithic, and I respect your opinion, Madam Mayor, but I want to share that I do identify a Jewish American Heritage proclamation as being about our culture, our ethnicity, not anything to do with our religion. I happen to not be a religious Jewish woman. And it really crosses over in many ways how Jews live their lives. In your community, you do have an abundance of Jewish community members, and I think this proclamation honors the diversity that exists here and in all of Orange County. And I do urge you to maintain the proclamation, and thank you for taking it to beyond consideration, I hope, into making it happen today. So again, I just wanted to speak out and say that I, I really identify as a Jewish person culturally, and that that is what I believe this proclamation is about as a Jewish American. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Up until now, up until this last week, I'm Dahlia Bromberg. Up until last week, I've never spoken publicly about my Judaism. And I felt that it was important for me to go and help my community with the different groups who are participating, to explain and share the importance of thanking you, and by the way, thank you, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and the council members for having us and giving us this opportunity to share our gratitude for having Jewish Heritage Month. I've lived in Orange County, and by the way, I, after doing it the first time, seeing that my friend was up there alone, I went ahead and decided to go forth and share. And in any case, I'm a longtime member of Laguna, of Orange County. I've been here over 30 years. I live next door in Laguna Hills. I went to high school there, my kids have gone to high school there, they're now in college. And my mother has happily lived here for almost over 15 years. My mother-in-law also lives here, or lived here for many years. And I have friends from the community who are sitting in here, and I'm very familiar with many members of the community in Laguna Woods. My mother is thankful for the amazing community and friends she has made by participating in the events that Laguna Woods has offered. She has taken classes, she's gone to events. I remember way back when my kids were young and we would go to this, I don't remember what it is now, but we made the newspaper, The Globe, way back when. And so we've been very active, and of course, now it's mainly me and my mother and friends. And, and so, as Tal had mentioned, yes, I'm Jewish. Yes, I'm a little more observant. I have family in Israel. I mean, this isn't about it, because that's not what I've spoken in the other communities either, as you had mentioned. But yes, I have an enormous amount of family in Israel. I have a son in Israel. And, you know, but that's not, we're here tonight to be proud members of the community and thanking you again for Jewish Heritage Month. The gesture is deeply meaningful, especially now, because over the past several months, our community, as you're well aware of, has faced increasing fear and isolation with antisemitism on the rise, from elementary schools to college campuses and beyond. It's been painful and a challenging time. That's why this proclamation is so important. It's more than a symbolic act, it's a public statement that Laguna Woods does stand with its commitment to honoring all communities and bridging, building bridges of understanding even in these difficult times. Jewish Heritage Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the Jewish community's enduring contributions in science, the arts, education, business, and public service, while also educating others about our history, our culture, and our resilience. It's a way to fight hate with knowledge and fear with empathy. I've been active in youth groups, volunteered throughout my children's school years, and continue to be deeply involved in my local and Jewish community.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Ms. Bromberg. Unfortunately, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there a Georgie, Georgia Willis? I'm sorry if I got your name incorrect.
That was most distressing, hearing what you read. I, I felt like I was hearing a how-to on antisemitism or approval of it. And the Jewish faith and culture are inextricably linked, especially look, when you look at the historical record, they've contributed so much to society, medically especially, and in other ways. And to hear any of this crap that I've heard this morning was totally not appreciated. And so far as any of the attacks, Qatar alone has funded American universities, $2 billion for antisemitism things going on. And so I'm very happy, foreign students who've come here to study, or they're going to go riot on about, and their antisemitic grants, it's fine to deport them. We don't need people coming here causing violence. So anyway, this was not city business. I came here about city business, but anyone who would begrudgingly in any way come against the Jewish community, it's not acceptable. It wasn't acceptable in the '30s, it's not acceptable now. And I mean, and my debt to the Jewish community frankly is, is huge. I came to the Lord through Isaiah 53 in the Old Testament. That's where I met my Messiah. And so it's an insult, it was an insult to Christians, Jews, and I'm just amazed to even be hearing any of these words I heard today, because it's just so, so morally bankrupt.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else?
I just want to bring it back to what the purpose of the, J-CAN's purpose was in starting all of this, and it's about American Jews and their contribution to this country. Even George Washington, he spoke back in 1790, and he said, "The United States, which gives bigotry to no sanction, no sanction, to persecution, no assistance, requires only that they who live under its protection should demean themselves as good citizens in giving it on all occasions their effectual support." The Jews took that promise, the Jews, which is an ethnic and religious group, took that promise to heart, and have been keeping their end of the bargain with this, to this country. They've made contributions in every areas of life, politics, military, entertainment, medicine, aerospace, architecture, law, fashion, basically every area. And the Jews have given significant contributions. That's what we're trying to honor about Americans. Despite the current meteor, mediocre, mediocritic lies, I'm sorry, in antisemitism, Jews are not deterred from their commitment to be good citizens and to make this community a better place, including, as George Washington promised, one free from bigotry and persecution and one for all people. So I just want to bring back to why we're here today. Thank you.
I'd like to speak as well. My name is Joshua Schaefer. I'm the one who corresponded with Councilmember Carol Moore. I'd like to thank her first of all. I'd like to say a couple of things. One, I do appreciate you expressing your opinion, but I will say, I'm a mixed, my, one side of my family is European, the other side is Middle Eastern. I am Jewish on both sides. I served in the Army. I was a paratrooper in the military for three years in the IDF. I'm very proud of both being Israeli and American. I'd like to correct something the mayor said. We are not, J-CAN, we are not an international organization. We are an organization that is only focused and based within Orange County and the betterment of the Jewish community in Orange County, branching out and fighting antisemitism to build understanding to the things that we face day to day. I am honestly very disappointed to hear some of the rhetoric that I was, that was exposed today. Again, I'd like to say that again, in that proclamation, it does not say that Jews are just a religion, we are an ethno-religion. And I feel like I'm a very good example of that. Again, my, one side of my family is from one side of the world, and my other side is the other, and they met in Israel. And only in Israel can that happen, and this is not to say, to bring in politics, and I'm very disappointed that politics were brought into it, because this has nothing to do with Israel. And yes, Jews have a strong tie to Israel, but we should not be blamed for any of the government actions, or any of the actions taken by Israel, or any of the perceptions or rhetoric that goes around Israel. The same way, you would not blame an Asian American for the actions of the government in China against the Uyghur Muslim, Uyghur Muslims. You should not blame Jews for the actions of the Israeli government or equate one to another. So again, I'd like to say, J-CAN, we are a hyper, hypo, hyper locally focused organization in Orange County to the betterment of all community members, Jewish and non-Jewish in the communities, and to build understanding and fight against antisemitic rhetoric in all of its forms. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I'll move the proclamation.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Okay, we come to the city treasures report. Excuse me?
Yeah, the Asian American.
Oh, I'm sorry, Asian American Pacific Islander Month. I thought that, I thought we had done all the others. Asian American Pacific Islander Month. Madam Clerk, will you please read the?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, she did? Okay, I forgot.
City of Laguna Woods, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2025 proclamation. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have played a critical role in the social, economic, and political development of the United States. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are one of the fastest growing ethnic populations in the state of California. And whereas Cantonese, Chinese, Indian, Iranian, Japanese, Korean, Taiwanese, and other Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders represent more than 20% of the population of Laguna Woods. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander clubs and communities throughout Laguna Woods actively promote cultural heritage and understanding. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have a proud legacy of service and dedication to our community, state, and country. Now therefore, it be it resolved that the Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Laguna Woods and encourages reflection on the accomplishments that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made throughout history dated this 21st day of May 2025.
Thank you. Comments? Councilmember Lee? Would you like to make a comment?
Well, I think it's wonderful that we are honoring the different groups for their cultural heritage, and as a part of Asian culture, I'm very proud that we have many, many different Asian communities in our village. And they're vibrant, and they're very active, and good for the city. Thank you.
I too support this proclamation, and just reading the different Asian and Pacific Islanders, Cantonese, Chinese, Indian, Iranian, Japanese, Korean, Taiwanese, and other Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and represent 20% of the population in Laguna Woods. So I, I think that's an amazing feat. I'm just really appreciative of the city council for acknowledging them, and I think this is a, I support this proclamation.
Councilmember Connors?
As I said for the last one, it is our tradition and history to celebrate the diverse elements of our community, and our Asian American neighbors particularly present us with rich depictions of their culture. They have many, many events to which all of us are invited, and it expands our horizons and it enriches our city.
Just as we did with the Jewish community, which, where we've attended many of their functions, we do the same thing with the Asian Americans. It's everything from the Philippines, and, and you have the same, you have people from different groups. Filipinos, you have Japanese, you have Koreans, and even in Korea, you have different groups. Even in China. In China, I think there, I can't even recall how many different groups there are that are, consider themselves Chinese. Some are very tall, some are not very tall at all, and they have different dances, and you see the same thing with any cultural group, and I recognize the importance of each of these groups. Thank you.
That's a good idea.
I'll move the proclamation.
I, my, my last comment is, I think it's more fun and easier to have one proclamation per continent. Maybe we won't have all these complications. And how come we spend our, so, a long time on Jewish, the proclamation on Jewish heritage, and this Asian, the proclamation on Asia, it has at least 10 or 15 countries. And, but we're just as happy, and thank you very much.
The Asian culture is very, very interesting in all of its forms, yes, and we enjoy it.
They all are.
They've grown to so much over 22% of the community.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
I appreciate all you have to say in the discussions, and I'm glad you're doing this so. But this is a city council meeting, and a lot of us have other things to do, and maybe you should put this at the end of the agenda and go forth. I approve of it, but I don't think I should have to sit through all of this to get to one thing. I have thanks to your other group as well. Thank you.
Would you consider that? Next one.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There's two requests to speak, but they said item five, which is public comments, which is what we're coming to. This is the time and place for members of the public to address the city council on items not appearing on this agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council is unable to take action on such items, but may ask clarifying questions of the speaker, engage in brief discussion, refer items to city staff, and or schedule items for consideration at future meetings. So there's a Selena Behringer?
Hello, and good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the community. I'm Selena Behringer. I'm an outreach volunteer and staff of Alzheimer's Orange County, your largest orange county not-for-profit agency specializing in dementia. I've come here to talk to you about what we do- I've come here to talk to you about what we do and to present to you these goodie bags, essentially. We know that dementia is a public health crisis. We've been working in OC since 1982, supporting families coping with all forms of dementia. We know that even in Orange County alone, more than 164,000 people have Alzheimer's disease or some form of mild cognitive impairment. So Alzheimer's Orange County, being a locally governed, community-based organization, helping OC families for 43 years, we provide information and referral to community resources, we provide support for caregivers from licensed clinical staff, we have actually over 40 support groups here in Orange County. We also have interfaith religious services specially adapted for individuals with dementia. So we do it all. But just wanted to quickly come up here, introduce myself and what we do, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mary Wall, senior mobility fees.
I'm here about the senior mobility program. I believe that the last meeting you had, you increased the cost for this mobility program, and you said you wanted to help the residents. Well, that isn't helping the residents. I also believe that you have a shortfall, you have, you have a grant, and then you have a shortfall. The city has a shortfall. However, there are 16,000 residents in Laguna Woods Village, and we provide revenue to you in the amount of the TV franchise fee, $4 million, $4 million a year, trash franchise fee, 40,000, these are only approximate figures, but they're, because they're old, 40,000 a year. You also receive from us, because we're residents of Laguna Woods, property tax, vehicle license fees, sales tax, planning engineering fees, gas tax, magic measure. And yet, you want to introduce the costs, increase the costs, $2 per ride for the residents. And you said you would want to do something for the residents. Well, I assure you that rating the costs on the senior mobility program is not helping the residents at all, and I'm very disappointed that you voted this in. Thank you, with all the money that you collect from us.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Chris, do you have a response to that?
I appreciate Mrs. Wall's comments. I don't have a response per se, except to say that the city receives approximately 300,000 in cable television franchise fees, not 4 million.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Considerable difference.
Excuse me? Okay. Councilmember Connors has a comment.
We do have a senior mobility grant, and that pays for a portion, that subsidizes a portion of the taxi, of the senior mobility fare. But we have gotten so much interest in this program and so many people taking rides.
Does she get to speak again?
That the cost to the city is eating into our general fund and impairing our ability to provide other services. And the fact is that every dollar we spend for a taxi ride is a dollar that we don't spend on something else. And not everybody in the village, although a large number of villagers, uses the taxi. So keeping the fares where they are and going bankrupt was not an option for us, so we felt we had to increase the fares as little as we could.
Would anyone else?
I'd just like to comment about 300,000.
There's a, there's a single opportunity to speak on public comments.
That is per quarter.
Say no other comments, okay? City Treasurers Report.
Yes, I will be presenting the City Treasurers Report as of April 30th, 2025. Total cash and investments as of April 30th were 13,936,789. The general fund operating cash and investments ended at 6,930,680, and general fund reserves at 3.7 million. The special revenue funds had an ending balance of 3,252,409. Cash and investments are broken up into cash and cash equivalents totaling 691,826. The city has invested in late pooled money investment account with an ending balance of 6,945,97. And investments in CDs ended at 6,299,866. This total is at 13,936,789. During the month of April, we had a transfer of 500,000 to the city's checking account for cash flow purposes. During the month of April, we also had one CD that matured at the end of March, however the principal was transferred to the city's checking account in early April, and that was for 100,000. The city also purchased three CDs in April, one at 245,000 for a 24-month term of 4% yield rate, another one for 245,000 with a 30-month term at 4% yield rate, and lastly, another one for 235,000 with a 24-month term at 4% yield rate. The other post-employment benefits trust fund had an ending balance of 145,325 with a net loss of just $10. And the pension liability trust fund had an ending balance of 284,513 with a net gain At this time, we'll receive any public comments.
Public comments are open. Anyone have anything to say about the Treasurers Report?
I move the receiving. A second?
All in favor? Aye. I just want to say thank you to our city treasurer. I think you do a terrific job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The quarterly financial report?
Yes, so the, the quarterly financial report is as of March 31st, 2025. As of March 31st, the general fund revenues ended at 5,155,534. The general fund's three main revenue sources in the third quarter were property tax, sales tax, and cannabis business tax. Property tax revenue totaled at 1,850,607. For property taxes, there are two substantial payments received throughout the year, one in January and one in May, and they were both, they have both been received as of today in the amount of 1,578,665 each. Sales tax is the second main revenue source of the city's revenues totaling now 787, sorry, 787,379. This represents seven months received in the fiscal year. And cannabis business tax is the third revenue source totaling 682,629. This also represents seven months received in the fiscal year. Expenditures ended at 5,424,462. Expenditures are, are as expected and in line with the city budget. Transfers were made to the S&amp;P Fund and the Capital Projects Fund at 1,675,852. These transfers were made to the S&amp;P Fund and the Capital Projects Fund, which are consistent with the city council approvals. Revenues for the special revenue funds ended at 1,215,353. We are expecting monies from reimbursable grants, so this, this will grow. And we are also recognizing any earned revenue on certain grants at the end of the fiscal year when all expenditures are incurred. Expenditures for special revenue funds ended at 1,701,805. All ARPA funds were fully obligated as of December 31st, 2024, and the final projects are in progress. Expenditures are as expected and in line with the budget as well. Transfers in ended at 580,000, as I mentioned, to this S&amp;P Fund, and a ending fund balance of 2,465,052. The Capital Projects Fund revenues ended at 37,645,000, and this includes all interest income. Expenditures were at 396,325. This includes completions of a couple of projects that have been completed as of today and others which are in progress or in the design or an engineering phase. Transfers in ended at 1,095,852. And the ending fund balance for Capital Projects as of March 31st is 1,755,795. I would like to also point out that interest income earned in the third quarter for all funds totaled 144,027 dollars with a total of 440,000 in interest income earned in the fiscal year as of March 31st. We however expect interest income to decrease moving forward due to a lower investable fund balance as the final ARPA funds are expended and because of declining interest rates. Additional details are included in the quarterly financial report, which can be found in the agenda packet. And at this time, we'll receive any public comments.
Okay. That's a receive and file item two. Thank you. Okay, great. We don't have to vote on a receive and file item, right?
You have the motion in a second, so I would vote.
Okay, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we come to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or city staff requests that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and consideration of action. Members of the public may address the city council on items appearing on the consent calendar regardless of whether an item is removed for separate discussion and consideration of actions. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Would anyone like to move the consent?
I move this consent calendar.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, so public hearings. Shall we re-schedule, re-change around the public hearings so that the fire authority doesn't have to sit here and they can do the?
I, I don't think either of them will be particularly long, at least from the staff perspective, so.
Okay. Okay, then we'll go to inclusionary housing in Lufi.
All right. Item point one today is the inclusionary housing in Lufi. So by way of just a bit of background, generally speaking, inclusionary housing ordinances are ordinances that require that when new development is constructed, a certain percentage of the units within those housing projects be reserved for households of designated income levels. And communities are free to designate what those income levels are, but generally speaking, they tend to be very low or lower income households. State law requires that when cities have inclusionary housing ordinances, that they provide alternative means of complying with the requirement to build onsite affordable housing for rental development projects. The most common of those alternatives is payment of an in-lufi. That in-lufi is something that is generally calculated as being equal to the cost of constructing the affordable units, but it's paid to the city for contribution to some future affordable housing project rather than the developer constructing the housing onsite. Generally speaking, cities prefer that developers implement the inclusionary housing ordinance as written, which is to say, when they build a project, they build a certain number of affordable units within the project. But again, state law requires that the city provide alternatives when a developer is building rental housing. There isn't a requirement for you to provide alternatives when a developer is building for-sale housing, so today we're simply talking about a legal obligation to provide alternatives for prospective future rental development projects. The city council amended its inclusionary housing ordinance in September of last year. That is codified in the municipal code at chapter 13.25. And in that ordinance, it does contemplate that the city council will adopt an in-lufi in the future by resolution. That's the activity that is before you today. Again, the inclusionary housing ordinance is already on the books. You had a public hearing regarding that ordinance in August, and then a second reading and ultimately adoption in September of 2024. Economic and Planning Systems Incorporated is the firm that we retained to calculate what a reasonable in-lufi would look like. There is a memo from EPS included in your agenda packet that provides the rationale behind the proposed in-lufi, as well as some general information on EPS as a company. The in-lufi that's proposed in the agenda materials is $642 per affordable square foot. So generally, that is calculated by taking the average size of a market rate unit at that prospective future housing development and multiplying that by the number of affordable units that would be required under the inclusionary housing ordinance. Again, a developer doesn't have to pay this fee. A developer can choose to build affordable housing onsite, they can choose to pay this fee, or they can choose one of the other alternatives that are included in the ordinance. So that's ultimately for rental projects, something that's in their court. Some cities present this fee as a per-market-rate-square-foot fee, so I just wanted to give you that comparison, that the $642 per affordable square foot is approximate to a $32.12 per-market-rate-square-foot fee, if that's a way that you're more accustomed to looking at it. If the city council approves the fee today, staff would do a couple of things. We would forward amendments to your existing inclusionary housing ordinance at some point in the future to clarify exactly how to calculate affordable square footage. We would also be looking into options for how any in-lufis that we might collect in the future could be used to fund affordable housing. The city is not a developer, right? We don't build housing, and so generally speaking, in-lufis are held in affordable housing trust funds and then contributed to other affordable housing projects that a developer might be undertaking to make them more financially feasible. The city, of course, could choose to take in-lufis and construct housing, but that isn't something that we see in the cards and generally not something that cities do.
Isn't that only when the city has property too?
Well, yeah, you would have to have property.
You don't have property.
There's a lot of things you'd have to do to make that possible.
We have no property, so it would not, thank you.
Right. And then we would regularly reevaluate the adequacy of the in-lufi. One of the things that we don't want to have happen, because the market conditions change over time, if we don't keep the fee current and a developer decides they're going to build housing somewhere in Laguna Woods, if the affordable housing in-lufi is too low, it makes it more desirable for the developer to pay the fee instead of constructing the housing. And then because the fee is low, the city then receives an amount of money that is insufficient to actually contribute to an affordable housing project. So even though the likelihood of development in Laguna Woods at least anytime in the near future is low, we would anticipate coming back to you on a regular basis, probably annually, like we do our other fees, to keep this fee current.
And, and why don't we point out, who would object to these fees? The developers, would they not?
Right, developers are.
And point out why, thank you.
Yeah, and I don't want to speak for all developers, but a lot of developers are opposed in principle to inclusionary housing requirements because they would like to be able to build whatever type of units they want in a community. And certainly, they don't want to pay a in-lufi in lieu of doing that either. So it's not unusual to hear. So it's not unusual to hear that develop, development interests are opposed to inclusionary housing fees or inclusionary housing ordinances in general. From the city's perspective, an inclusionary housing ordinance is contemplated in your housing element as a way of encouraging development that meets the state's housing needs allocation requirement for the city. So again, we're not required to build housing. We're required to create conditions that are conducive to private property owners and private developers potentially building housing in the future. So you went through that process also last year, or actually, two years ago, I think, to update the housing element. The inclusionary housing ordinance can be thought of as one tool that helps to create conditions that make it more likely that affordable housing will be constructed.
Chris, you just went through something, and I'm going to ask you to do it again to explain, because for some people, it's confusing that, oh, you're charging all this money. Look, the city doesn't want to build affordable housing. Could you make sure that we, everyone understands that point once more? Thank you.
Yeah, so the purpose of the inclusionary housing ordinance is to see that if a developer, and that's a big if, right, but if a developer was building a housing project in Laguna Woods, that a certain percentage of those units would be set aside for lower-income households. Your existing inclusionary housing ordinance sets out the percentages and the types of income levels for those homes. That is the goal of the inclusionary housing ordinance, but state law says that we have to provide a plan B, right, a second option for developers that don't want to build onsite affordable housing in rental projects, so in apartment projects. In that case, we have to offer alternatives, and the most common of those alternatives is an in-lufi that the developer could choose to pay. They're not required to, right? The first thing they could do is build housing and pay no fees. But if they choose not to build housing onsite, then they have the option to pay an in-lufi, and then the city then has to figure out what to do with that money, but it's mostly, it's contributed to other affordable housing projects. Does that answer your question?
I hope it's clear, because we've had people who have come to the conclusion that we're trying to stop affordable housing, when essence, this whole point is to encourage it. And I want to make sure people understand that the fee isn't something we're doing to stop it, but where actually works the other way around.
Yes.
So for people who are confused, I hope this clarifies it for you. Thank you.
Yeah, and beyond that, there is a, an opportunity for a public hearing today. So when I conclude my staff report, my recommendation would be that you open the public hearing, receive public testimony. After you receive that public testimony, go ahead and close the public hearing. And then staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Adopting an In-Lufi That May Be Used to Satisfy the Requirement to Provide Inclusionary Units for Rent at the Site of a Residential Development Pursuant to Laguna Woods Municipal Code Section thirteen point two-five point zero-five-zero and Determining and Certifying that This Action Is Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act." I do want to note that we did receive two letters or two emails in advance of today's meeting, both of which have been forwarded to the city council. One was from the Building Industry of Southern California Incorporated, Orange County Chapter, generally stating their objection to inclusionary housing ordinances. And then a second from Madeline Whitman, a resident of Laguna Woods, with some questions and concerns about the item on today's agenda. Ms. Whitman also received a response from staff. And with that, I will conclude my staff report.
Thank you. So public hearing is now open, and Georgiana Willis submitted a request to speak.
I would like to request that this agenda item, the in-lufi resolution, be tabled. I respectfully request that the council table this resolution until the public is given full access to the updated zoning changes, CEQA exemption justification, and a list of all affected parcels, including fourteen point seven acres of HOA trust land under scrutiny. The public has not been notified of CEQA exemption, is not adequately reported, and recent records from the county show possible irregularities. This action affects thousands of residents and must proceed without full legal and, or proceed without full legal and environmental justification. And just point out some of these issues. The proposed in-lufi, the six hundred and forty-two per square foot, could come to hundreds of thousands of dollars per market rate. The residents have not been provided the necessary documentation or parcel, parcel level impact data. The policy affects future density, infrastructure, and could introduce development of parcels that have not been publicly disposed, disclosed. Recent zoning changes to thirty-two parcels lacked transparency, and concern has still been unresolved. So again, I respectfully request this table be, this table, agenda item, be tabled until full documentation is available.
Thank you. Again, our goal is to have affordable housing. And Chris, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I can clarify a couple of things. There is no rezoning included in this action today. There, the city, when we went through the process to update our housing element to comply with state law, we had to provide an opportunity to locate an additional nine hundred and ninety-seven units in Laguna Woods. The city council did that without implicating any Laguna Woods Village property. So none of the Golden Rain Foundation properties, none of Third Mutual, none of United, none of the Towers was included in that. There are seventeen potential housing sites. They are all outside of Laguna Woods Village. Irrespective of that, this item has nothing to do with that today. That zoning action was taken, I believe, in twenty twenty-three. So that is long since done. There was an environmental impact report prepared for that, which is available on the city's website. But again, doesn't implicate any Laguna Woods Village property. I know there were rumors to the contrary, but there are seventeen sites that the city identified outside the gates on property owned by private property owners that are not any of the mutuals or the Golden Rain Foundation. So I appreciate the concern, and I'd be happy to talk through it more offline with you, but today, all the city council is being asked to do is adopt a fee that is already contemplated by an ordinance that also does not implicate Laguna Woods Village property. The only way that this fee or inclusionary housing in general would ever relate to property within Laguna Woods Village is if a mutual decided to build additional housing. That is their own decision to make. The city, you know, we're a permitting agency, but if they don't build new housing, this has no relevance at all to existing development.
Why would it have, why would it have relevance? In other words, if you, at least.
Come up to the mic just.
Hand me the microphone, please.
In the country that I grew up in, this country, you buy a property, you own it. I don't have to make it available to any special group. I own it, I build on it. So what's going wrong here is, I mean, I know that, I think Sacramento, a couple of years ago, was trying to push all the cities in Orange County, at least, to add a bunch of low-income housing, and they, they had really upped it for maybe they would say, do seven this year or something. I think Mission Viejo or one of those cities, they were told to do eighteen hundred or nine hundred, something like that, or something ridiculous, because, you know, how much spare land do you have, et cetera? So it just, to me, it sounds like government overreach, and I don't think I should need to be told, well, this has to be low-income housing. I mean, we live in a capitalist society. I realize a lot of people don't want that, but it's, you know, why have that in name only?
I think, may I make a comment? I think that, I hope people here are interested in what we're hearing, because every year, I, not every year, what is, what's the cycle? Pardon me?
Every six to eight years.
Six to eight years, we have to prepare and spend lots of money, thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars, to satisfy the state that we have designated properties, just as you said. We don't control the land, it belongs to other people, and yet we have to identify. We have to prepare lengthy reports. They're often not accepted, and it goes on back and forth, and us spending money on consultants, literally thousands of dollars. It's called R H N A, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and this is a problem. The state is requiring this. This is an exercise, because we aren't building the houses. We don't even know if somebody wants to build the houses. So it is a problem. It's a very expensive problem, and I hope that people will speak up against the R H N A process. It's extremely expensive and wasteful.
And I'll just add that it, I don't want to get too into this, because again, it's not the agenda item that is before us, but a lot of what the city does is required by the state. And this is a very, the R H N A question that Councilmember Moore mentioned is a very good example of that. What you're talking about with like Mission Viejo and increases in numbers, cities are required to provide opportunities for housing development. For a number of years, we were required to provide an opportunity for two additional units in Laguna Woods. In the sixth cycle of the R H N A process, that number increased to nine hundred and ninety-seven. That is the state telling us that we need to provide opportunities for nine hundred and ninety-seven homes to be built. It doesn't mean that we have to build them. It doesn't mean we have to require anybody to build them, and it doesn't even mean that a private property owner has to build them. They still get to choose what they do on their property. We just have to create zoning conditions that if they want to build housing, they get to build housing. So again, we did all of that. We accommodated those nine hundred and ninety-seven units outside of Laguna Woods Village. So there, nothing changed inside Laguna Woods Village. I can appreciate that there are lots of opinions. I have my own on the merits of what the state requires, and you heard some of Councilmember Moore's comments. What we tried to do was address that R H N A question in a way that was as even-handed as possible and didn't place housing where we knew people didn't want housing. In previous cycles of the R H N A process, there were ideas that there would be additional housing development in Laguna Woods Village. In the sixth cycle, the council made a decision to locate all of those units, potential units, outside of Laguna Woods Village. So that's, that's a big change from the past. Again, I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you about it. Gets a little arcane, and it's very involved, but, but I'd be happy to talk to you about it some more. Again, that isn't this item. This item is just, when we have an inclusionary ordinance, the state requires us to have a fee. This is the fee that we've calculated for it.
I appreciate it. Thank you, because I'm a capitalist, and what I see going on is just.
Yeah.
Well.
If you want to leave your contact information with Yoli, I'd be happy to have a conversation with you. We can talk more about it.
Yeah, I don't think I have my one with me right now, but if I do, I'll leave it.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
But I will contact you.
All right. Yeah.
Yes, you had a public comment, come forward.
Hi, my name is Darlene Backus, and I am here to ask you to table the resolution that's on the, that's up for voting today. My, you know, you talk about R H N A. R H N A, I've learned a lot, awful lot about zoning. I don't know as much as you, Chris, but I also know that it goes back in California to nineteen sixty-nine that they were doing, am I correct, in these R H N A-type?
Yeah, it's definitely not new.
Right, and so this is nothing new. This has been going on and on and on. Also, I'll say what I have to say here, and then, sorry, I couldn't print my paper out that I wrote it on. So where is it? Here? Yeah. It's down here now. I'm reading this from my phone, because since I objected at the December third, twenty twenty-four GRF meeting, I've been faced with what I believe is digital retaliation. My devices don't print, and my files disappear, my Wi-Fi is throttled, and even though I pay my, for the full service, I've been, it's been traced to the system that is used here, the Microsoft three sixty-five, a Vanco and Dynamics AX, which was in, that was brought up in a two thousand thirteen GRF meeting. That's when the, the technology first came in here. No one gave permission for the level of monitoring, and I just want the truth and fair process every resident deserves. And anything that I refer to, I have read. It's not my idea, not something I think that somebody ought to do, but it's usually a law, and so I had to preface that. Okay. I respectfully request that the city council table this item until the public receives full access to zoning updates, the CEQA exemption justification, and a list of all affected parcels. And it says in one of these, "all city," and Laguna Woods is, Village is in the city. So it says, within the city, it's, on this thirteen, it says, "and determining and certifying that this action is exempt from California Environmental Quality Law, CEQA." And I don't approve of that. I don't think we should be exempt of any environmental. I mean, I don't know if this is another way around something else, but anyway, the list of all affected parcels, especially the fourteen point seven acres of the HOA trust land now under scrutiny. This parcel was funded by the residents, remains HOA common area, no sale or zoning charge has been disclosed. I follow the process from May to August. That was your last one with R H N A. And I found, and I've asked for the, that report. I'd like to see what those, those parcels, the fourteen parcels. And I've asked time and time again, you updated the zoning, and I only want to see what it was updated to when that was closed out in August, and I don't get a reply. The public hasn't been properly notified, and CEQA isn't supported, and the county records raise red flags. Please table this item until full review can be disclosed and completed. Thank you.
Diane, the village is private property. We're not, we don't do anything inside the gates.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but any property that you have in here was once common area property and belonged to our homeowners association.
You mean this property out here belonged to the homeowners? I see. Okay, thank you for your comment.
But today, we're not dealing with any zoning.
Again, there's no, yeah, there is no.
Well, I understand that, but she, you know, doesn't know that, I mean, but we are now in the, with the city, so.
Yeah, so there are no affected parcels by this. This is just.
But it says all city, and we're in the city.
Yeah, this ordinance applies citywide, but again, the only way that this ordinance would ever.
It says all city, I beg your pardon, it can be done anywhere in the city, and we are the city, the HOA.
Again, this, I understand, Darlene.
I've looked it up.
The inclusionary housing ordinance only applies, it does apply citywide, but it only applies if you build new housing, so.
I'd still like a table, please.
Okay.
And let's clarify, there's no zoning in this vote.
This is not a zoning action. Exempt also is a term used in state law. There are exemptions in state law from the California Environmental Quality Act. Fees, which is again what this is, just adopting a fee. Adopting a fee is exempt under state law from the California Environmental Quality Act. That's not something we dreamed up. That's something that exists in state law.
And we also have to have an alternative, do we not?
Yes.
So it's not as if we have to comply with the state. So we have to have an alternative, and this isn't a zoning.
And Darlene, I can definitely get you.
I want to ask one more question. Why can I not obtain, or if anyone else that I know that wants it, the proper zoning for the fourteen point seven acres in the middle of our common area golf course, the zoning for that, why is that not available? And why can't just be?
The map is on the website. I can pull it up for you right now to show you, but.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, we can, I mean, if you want to stick around afterwards, we can show you, but if you're asking about the zoning for the Laguna Woods Village, the large golf course across the street, it's zoned open space recreation.
Well, so was the parcel until recently, unless it just was changed?
We can talk offline about it, but the maps and all of our zoning is, is on the website. I don't know what you're asking.
I'm asking, what is the zoning on the fourteen point seven acres?
I, I don't know what the fourteen point seven is, but if you're referring to the golf court. Okay, the recycle plant is owned by the El Toro Water District. Okay, the recycle plant is owned by the El Toro Water District. Okay.
What is the zoning?
The zoning on... It's zoned as community facilities. Yeah, it's community facilities, but again, I think your issue is with whether or not laws were followed when that property was sold or transferred or something. It's not a city matter. If you run a title report on the property, that property is owned by the El Toro Water District. If you have concerns with that, I would suggest talking to the El Toro Water District, not the city.
Where would I obtain a record for this transfer of this property?
Probably a title search.
Yeah, a title search through the county. Again, we're not a party to private property transactions, so that's not the city.
I just don't understand why there's a confusion over the homeowners office about that piece.
Okay.
You have another speaker?
Yeah, I've sent you previous emails on the subject. I can send those again.
Kate.
So was Catherine.
Mayor, Council, staff, thank you. I'm Kate Van Camp. I try to comment, as you know, but maybe the audience doesn't know, on all housing-related resolutions. I support this one, and I guess I would describe it as just tying up loose ends that took additional the contractor people to come up with the exact fee. I'm not an expert in the fee, so Rona Henry of Welcoming Neighbors Home, and I sent this out to seven other housing experts and advocates, and I invited them to give me any comment, which I would relay, and nobody has any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Closed public hearing. Does any of the council have comments? Seeing none.
Do we have to adopt the resolution?
You'll move the resolution.
Oh, you did. I didn't hear you. Okay, second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. It all in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, we come to fire hazard severity zones. Yeah. Staff report. Mr. Macon, please.
All right. So this is another function of state law, and I know there are lots of thoughts and questions on the subject, but I want to start off being very clear that state law requires two things. It requires the state fire marshal to identify areas as fire hazard severity zones. They're required to identify three different levels, very high, high, and moderate. Once those fire hazard severity zones are identified by the state fire marshal, cities and counties have 120 days to adopt those fire hazard severity zones, or fire hazard severity zones that are more restrictive than recommended by the state. So the city did not create these maps. We are required by law to adopt the maps, and the only thing that the city council can really do with respect to the maps is make them more restrictive. So our hands are very tied today. I also want to say a couple of words about the maps themselves. We included a frequently asked questions document in the agenda packet. I don't want to speak for the state because again, the city did not develop these maps, but I will say that in those FAQs, the state makes clear that they did not consider risk-based factors. So they did not consider whether somebody has maintained a defensible space perimeter around the property. They have not considered whether people have done fuel reduction projects. They've not taken into account the specifics of building construction. So a lot of homes in the village have wildfire hardened roofs and other building materials. That did not factor into the state's decision-making. The state considers these to be hazard maps, so they're looking at things like topography and wind and, you know, things that exist irrespective of whether, you know, somebody maintains defensible space or whether somebody builds a building in a way that is ignition-resistant. Again, cities and counties have to adopt these maps. We cannot reduce the maps. We cannot say, "Oh, the state said you're in a very high fire hazard severity zone. We think you're in a moderate zone," and so downgrade. We can't do that. The only thing that we could do is say, "Oh, if the state said you're in a moderate fire hazard severity zone, we think you should be in a high or very high," right? So we can go up, but we can't go back. So this is largely, in my mind, an administrative activity that we don't have a whole lot of say in. I want to walk you through the timeline for this. So the local fire hazard severity map was released by the state in March, on March 24. That same day, we made it available at City Hall and on our website for public review. That has continued to this day. Also, on March 24, we sent out notices to VMS to forward to GRF and Third and to PMP to forward to the Towers, as those are the three entities that the totality of residential property affected by fire hazard severity zones, totality is located in those developments. The village included some information on this in their What's Up in the Village Friday email newsletter on March 27. I met with VMS staff on March 31 to go through what the state had provided and to talk about a variety of other wildfire-related issues. Today is the public hearing on this subject and an opportunity for the city council to introduce the ordinance and approve the first reading. A second reading is required. That reading would take place on June 18 if the city council takes the recommended action today, and then the maps themselves would be effective on July 18, so 30 days after that second reading and adoption. We included some information in the agenda packet, including the map itself from the state. I will say that the state's map is a little bit hard to decipher if you are not really, really familiar with local roads and geography. So we tried to break it down into two different summary sheets. The first one that's on the screen here looks at total acreage. There's a lot of numbers, but let me tell you what I think is important on this. The previous fire hazard severity zone maps, which were adopted in 2012, included just over 625 acres of land. That land was distributed between the very high, high, and moderate zones. If you compare that acreage to the current 2025 fire hazard severity zone maps, there's actually about a 2% decrease in overall acreage. Now, even though there's that reduction in acreage, there is a significant increase in the acreage within the very high fire hazard severity zone. So there's 112% increase in very high, and then a 75% reduction in high, and a 27% reduction in moderate. So in broad strokes, what happened is the footprint for these fire hazard severity zones as a whole remained about the same, but within that footprint, the very high zone increased and the other two zones decreased. So it's really, in my mind, a reallocation of zones. We were candidly expecting much more growth in the zones. We were expecting it to push east on the city, but it pretty much stayed in place. I mean, it changed a little bit, but pretty much stayed in place with very significant growth in that very high fire hazard severity zone. Now, I will say that a large portion of the growth is related to open space areas. There were some undeveloped wilderness areas on the west side of the city that had previously been categorized as high fire hazard severity zones. Those have now been reclassified as very high fire hazard severity zones. So that's a really significant portion of the increase within that very high zone. Now, probably the even easier way of looking at this is to talk about what's included in each of the zones. So we've been working through the mapping. The state gave us overall shape files, but we need to drill down into what it means in Laguna Woods. And this is particularly important for the city because, as you know, we enforce the California Building Standards Code, and if you are located in the very high or high fire hazard severity zone for certain types of construction, there are different building code standards because of your adjacency to the wildland urban interface. So we've been going through and trying to identify specifically what structures and tie that back to numbers of manners and carports and all of that. If you look at it at a high level, there are approximately 545 buildings in the very high zone, and about half that many, 229, in the high fire hazard severity zone. Most of our buildings are multi-unit residential, so within those 545 units in the very high fire hazard severity zone, there are about 1,300 individual manners or individual units, and there are 42 carports. In addition to that, there are three clubhouses and one of the emergency gates, the emergency gate in the Gate 11 neighborhood that are within that very high fire hazard severity zone. There are three El Toro Water District facilities, one reservoir and two lift stations located within that zone. And then the city's woods and wilderness preserve property and some other open space areas that are managed by OC Parks are also included in the very high zone. In the high fire hazard severity zone, again, much smaller than the very high zone, so you've got those 229 buildings. Within those buildings, there are 711 manners and 28 carports. The gate for Gate 11, the actual gatehouse itself, is in the high fire hazard severity zone. We're still working on the mapping for the moderate fire hazard severity zone. It is fairly small, and the reason it's not done is we put the priority on the very high and high fire hazard severity zones because that's where building codes change, where hazard disclosures for real estate transactions occur. In the moderate fire hazard severity zone, all the city's required to do is adopt it. There isn't actually a requirement beyond that. So for residents who live in the moderate fire hazard severity zone, there are not increased building codes. There's not hazard disclosures. We view it as the state putting a placeholder on the ground to say that, you know, this is an area of increased fire hazard. The state hasn't yet created requirements for it, but we expect at some point that, you know, the state wouldn't classify something as a particular fire hazard severity zone if it didn't have an idea that it was going to do something in the future. But we're still working on that. I can tell you that the Towers is within the moderate hazard severity zone. Gate 10 is within that, the gatehouse itself, the emergency gate in the Gate 14 neighborhood, and then another one of the El Toro Water District's reservoirs is located in that zone as well. So we're continuing to refine this, but I wanted to show you this as opposed to just showing you the state map, which is, you know, colors on a page that's a little bit harder to decipher. These are in your agenda packet as well. So let me just say a word before we get to the recommended action that once these zones become effective, the city becomes responsible for, in large part, enforcing those different wildland urban interface area building code standards. We don't have a choice in that. Building codes are adopted at the state level. Every state or every city and every county has to enforce the California Building Standards Code. There is no part of California that isn't subject to the California Building Standards Code, and everywhere in the state that is within a very high fire hazard severity zone or a high fire hazard severity zone will be required to comply with the same building code standards that we will be responsible for enforcing here locally. I want to give OCFA an opportunity. If somebody wants to come up and say a few words, or you can just be here to respond to questions. It's up to you. Okay. We'll hear from OCFA, and then I'll walk through the recommended action as well.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council, staff members. We're here to answer any questions that you might have about the new map adoption for this iteration of the moderate, high, and very high fire severity zone maps. So if anyone has any questions, we're here to answer this for you.
Thank you. And I'll just note that just like the city didn't create these maps, OCFA didn't create these maps either. We are all the recipients of them. The state legislation that required the state fire marshal to create these maps did not include a mechanism for local input. So OCFA got these maps. At the same time, the city got these maps. It's just the way the process unfolded. Before we get to any questions, let me just, for the record, say that our recommendation today is to open a public hearing, receive public testimony, then close the public hearing, and then approve the introduction in first reading of an ordinance read by title with further reading waived, titled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Amending Chapter 10.13 of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code pertaining to Fire Hazard Severity Zones, Designating the Moderate, High, and Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zones in its jurisdiction as recommended by the State Fire Marshal pursuant to California Government Code Section 51178, and Determining and Certifying that the Ordinance is Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act." Again, this would come before the council again in July, and then it wouldn't...or in June, and then it wouldn't be effective until July if the council adopted it on the schedule that staffs recommended. So with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor for the public hearing.
Okay, so public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to ask any questions, make any comments. Seeing none, I'll ask the council. Okay.
Oh, yeah, I did have a question. Chris, can you go back to the fire hazard severity zone map summary?
First one or second one? The acreage or the one with the uses?
The other one.
The next one. Yeah.
Yeah. I was looking at that, and if you look at all the 545 and the 1,315 manners, they're all in Third Mutual. That's...
Yes.
So there's nothing...so United basically are not in that high severity zone.
Right. So this is all on the western edge of the city, so United has no property within a fire hazard severity zone. The totality of the residential units are in Third with the exception of the 311 units at the Towers. But all of the units in the very high and high severity zones, those are in Third. The Towers is in moderate.
Oh, okay. So basically, I guess if there's anything to feel somewhat secure about is if you live in United, you're...you kind of can rest a little bit easy.
The state believes if you live in United, you are sufficiently far from fire hazard, yes.
Okay. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Seeing none.
We have somebody who wants to speak.
Oh, come on up.
Sure.
Let me see how this thing works. I see a lot of vegetation and growth all around the city. Who's responsible for keeping that down so we don't have so much problem with it?
Private property owners are. So if you're talking about like vegetation around your home or in your neighborhood...
Just in the...
Oh, are you talking like the wilderness areas to the west of us?
Yeah, or even around, you know, those gates outside of Laguna Woods Village.
Outside of the village, yeah. So it's individual property owners. If there's something in particular that you're concerned with, you can definitely share it with either us or OCFA. They'll go out and do an inspection of the property. But just like if you owned a home, you, the homeowner, are responsible for the landscaping on your property. The same is true for like if you're a shopping center, the shopping center is responsible. If you own open space, the open space property owner is responsible. But if there's something that concerns you, definitely let us know or let OCFA know, and we'll take a look at it and see if it needs to be, you know, cut back.
Does anybody go around from the city to inspect or the fire department or the police department?
Why don't we let OCFA weigh in on...if you can just comment on defensible space inspections and that sort of thing. I know you work closely with Laguna Woods Village as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, to answer your question, currently within the city, we do approximately 400 defensible space inspections for the homes that are in the very high fire severity zone. But if you have a concern about vegetation that you feel is a hazard, by all means, reach out to us. We have a website. It's called publicservices.ocla.org, where you can submit a public concern about vegetation, and one of our fire prevention specialists will come out and take a look at that vegetation and see what we can do.
So you guys go automatically go around the city and look for that? Or are we off the work?
Yeah, we only inspect the areas where defensible space is required, which right now would be the very high fire severity zone. But outside of that area, if there's weeds, grasses, dead vegetation that you're concerned about, by all means, you can report that to OCFA, and we'll take a look at it.
Anybody else? Now seeing none.
We'll close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing.
I move, I move the council, the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Second?
It is an ordinance, isn't it?
Yeah, the introduction, first reading of the ordinance, which has been read. And once again, as it was with low-cost housing, this is just something that the state gives us to do, and so we do it.
It's a compliance.
Obedience.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, so we come to city council business, the ad hoc audit committee.
So as we do every year, we're looking for two council members to volunteer to serve on an ad hoc audit committee to work with our auditors on the audit for the fiscal year 2425. That is the fiscal year ending June 30th. I included some information in your agenda packet about who's served on these ad hoc committees in the past. There's no requirement for it to change, there's no requirement for it to be anybody in particular, but we are looking for two volunteers to participate. There's typically two meetings, both with the auditors. The first one would be conducted, I think, via Zoom within the next probably week or two, and then the second one would be conducted sometime in September after the final field work for the audit.
Anybody want to volunteer?
I see Councilmember Lee's hands up.
Good, thank you.
I haven't been on the committee in a while, so I can do it.
Great.
Okay, so the motion would be to appoint councilmembers Connors and Lee to an ad hoc audit committee beginning immediately through October 31st, 2025, to work with the city's independent auditors on matters related to fiscal year, to the fiscal year 202425 audit.
Great, thank you both. Okay, 9.2.
We need a motion and a second on it, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move, I make a motion to approve the councilmembers to this committee.
All right.
Second?
I second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay.
Okay.
Employee positions, compensation, and benefits.
Give me one second. Employee positions, compensation, and benefits. So as you know, this is one of the things that cities do publicly as opposed to other organizations that might have these discussions in closed or executive sessions. There is a resolution in your agenda packet today as well as some proposed job classifications. I'm going to walk through at a high level what they are. There's some narrative in your agenda packet that explains it in a little more detail, and I'm obviously happy to go into anything a little more in-depth if you would like. Many of the changes here today have to do with what the city council talked about in April, I believe. Might have been the meeting before that. Dates are blurring a little bit, but the city council received a recommendation from staff to in-source the building and code enforcement function, so to bring building inspection and building permitting as well as code enforcement in-house as opposed to contracting with a third party for those services. These actions before you today are part of the actions that we need to take prior to July 1st to make that transition possible. So the first part of the recommendation is for the city council to approve four new job classifications for four of the five positions that would be in-sourced. The Planning and Environmental Services Director, the Building Official, Building Inspectors, and Permit Technicians. We are still working on the code enforcement piece of this. That is likely to come to the council in the next month or two, but the immediate priority is making sure that we can see a smooth transition come July 1st with, you know, the move from contract to in-house. So we have job classifications proposed for those four positions as well as compensation ranges proposed for those four positions. As we do when we reevaluate or add compensation ranges, we took a look at some of our existing positions and have recommended increases in the compensation ranges for the city clerk, deputy city clerk, management analyst, and senior management analyst positions based on a market study. As we do in the resolution, even though it's separately approved, we've also noted a 2% increase in the city manager's base salary effective December 13th, 2025. This is approved separately in the employment agreement, but we include it in the resolution for transparency purposes, so that would be adjusted to $212,564.19. There are modifications related to paid holidays in here as well, and again, in large part, related to building services. So we've added language clarifying that if you're salaried or exempt in our terms, you would receive one hour of administrative leave for every hour required to work on a city holiday. For non-exempt or hourly staff, they would receive time and a half for hours worked on a holiday. But our new in-sourced building inspectors, building official, and permit technicians would be required to work on three of the city observed holidays, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Cesar Chavez Day, and Juneteenth National Independence Day, in order to prevent undue delays for construction projects that are going on in the city. If our inspectors aren't working, that means that a contractor can only get to a certain point in construction and then has to stop prior to the inspection taking place. If our permit technicians are not working, that means people cannot obtain building, new building permits or amend existing building permits. And so we have proposed that for these three city holidays, those staff would be required to work, and they would receive either administrative leave or time and a half depending on their employment status. The, sorry, one second. The recommendation also includes a new educational assistance program. We started looking at this, again, in the context of the new building employees. There are certifications that building inspectors, permit technicians, and building officials are required to have in order to perform their duties. We looked at the best way to provide for the maintenance of those certificates, and we're recommending that the city council establish an educational assistance program. This is authorized under federal law, and it provides for non-taxable reimbursement for approved tuition textbooks, et cetera. It would be available to all employees, including the city manager, with the exception of limited part-time employees who are not designated as building employees. That's another way of saying if you work less than 20 hours a week, you're not eligible for this benefit unless you're a building inspector who happens to work less than 20 hours a week or some other building person who has that certification requirement. It would be available to employees starting on the first day after their six months of employment, and the amount of reimbursement that would be available to them would range from $1,050 a calendar year to $5,250, which is the federal maximum per calendar year. That would increase based on tenure, so it would start lower, and based on years of service, it would increase. It's important to note that the only education that would be reimbursed is education that would be approved by their supervisor. So this is not somebody decides they want to go out and take some fun class and get the city to pay for it. These would be courses or training that, and related textbooks and supplies that are determined to be beneficial for their job performance, right? This is a professional development program, not just a personal enrichment program. We also would require that employees receive a C or better in the courses that they take. This is a reimbursement program, so no money would be advanced, it would only be available after they complete the course. They would have to receive a C or better if it's graded on an A through F scale, or they would have to pass the class if it's a pass/fail class. If an employee voluntarily separates or is terminated for cause within 12 months of receiving reimbursement, the policy includes language that requires that separated employee to reimburse the city within 60 calendar days. And then finally, this, the resolution includes some language pertaining to policies for acting status pay. And again, let me give you an example in a building context. The city needs to have a building official. That is a term that is included in the California Building Standards Code. They have very specific requirements under state law, or very specific duties under state law. If the building official position is vacant, the most common thing, at least on a very short-term basis, would be to temporarily promote a building inspector into that role to provide for consistency. In those instances where somebody at a lower level is assigned temporarily to a higher level job classification, we include language that would provide for them to receive either the starting step of that higher classification or a 10% temporary increase in salary until they return to their regular position. So just a temporary thing to avoid a situation where you're asking a lower-level employee to perform a higher level, you know, to do their boss's job for the same money. This provides for acting status pay when those acting status or acting appointments extend past 14 calendar days. And then finally, we included some language pertaining to unpaid leaves of absences, clarifying that if an employee is on an unpaid leave of absence, that they don't, after a certain point, continue to accrue paid time off or receive holiday pay, those sorts of things, just clarifying what an unpaid leave really means. And beyond that, like I said, I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but our recommendation is in two parts. You can take the recommendations separately, or you can take them together, that's the council's discretion. The first part is to approve job classifications for the following city employee positions: Building Inspector, Building Official, Permit Technician, and Planning and Environmental Services Director. And the second part is to adopt a resolution titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Repealing Resolution Number 24-31 and Establishing a Compensation and Schedule and Benefits for City Employees, Including the City Manager and Other Local Agency Executives as Defined in California Government Code Section 3511.1." We do have one amendment to that. We would like all three references, all three references to the 366th Day in Section 1B of Exhibit B replaced with 183rd Day, and the reference to 366 calendar days in Section 2B of Exhibit B replaced with 183 calendar days. That's just to clarify the eligibility at the sixth-month mark. The version that went out in your agenda packet included some language referencing a year's eligibility requirement. We think it's beneficial to start offering this educational reimbursement at the six-month mark as opposed to the year mark because those certifications can come up sooner than a year, depending on where they're at when they're hired. Having said that, there's an opportunity for public comment, and then any council discussion or action on this item.
Do we have any public comment on this?
Actually, I think you've done a very thorough job. One of the questions, though, and I know Carol talked to you. When I went through that, I saw that you're, you're taking your compensation range up 8%. You know, most of the water districts right now is 3% to 3.5%. So unless you're trying to have a catch-up, are you having any trouble hiring people with the compensation range that you have at this point? And so you have the necessity of raising that? Or was there some other reason for an 8% increase in your compensation scales?
Yeah.
When everybody else is running about 3%?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer the question. So first thing, and I know you understand this, but just for the general public, compensation ranges are not the same as increases in pay. So a compensation range identifies the starting point and the ending point for a range, and the employee can be paid at any point in between those ranges. So it sets a floor and a ceiling for that. Where most compensation ranges are staying exactly as they are right now. There are four positions that are existing currently that we're recommending changes to those compensation ranges. The situations for those are, depending on which one you're looking at, they're a little bit different. Some of those ranges, we have not updated recently, and that's because we don't currently have people in those positions. So just kind of out of a time consideration, we didn't get to them in the past, and now we're truing them up to a current range. So that, I think, is three of the four positions that we're proposing changes for. The other compensation range is based on what the market studies showed us, and so my guess on that, and again, I'd have to pull up the actual comparison to see what the reason was, but cities, and this may be a little bit different for water districts, but cities update salary ranges throughout the year. It depends in some cities when they have like bargaining units, they may have reopeners or emergent conditions that resulted in changes. Cities may also just be trying to increase salaries to stay competitive or because they're having trouble recruiting. And so at any given point, when we assess salary ranges, because we're looking at a comparison to, for most of our positions, other South County cities comparable positions, it's really dependent on what those cities did, so I can't speak to every particular situation. I will say that we always have a little bit of difficulty recruiting to fill vacancies, and the reason for that is, and this is getting into the weeds a little bit, but I'll go down this road a little. In Laguna Woods, we are somewhat unique in that our employees participate in two retirement systems. We participate in PERS, but we also participate in Social Security. And so while through one lens, that's a benefit to employees because they obviously get two, two different pots of retirement money, although they are adjusted downwards because of the dual system, for employees who are working in government but have not worked in the private sector, it's very unusual to get Social Security. And so when you come to Laguna Woods, it's like, okay, you're paying into Social Security, but the perceived benefit really isn't there because government employees are accustomed to CalPERS. So when we hire somebody, there's like 14-point-some-odd percent, I think, off the top just for retirement and Medicare and this dual retirement system. So that does put us at a little bit of a competitive disadvantage. Even though our salary ranges are competitive dollar-for-dollar, our employees generally pay more out of their salary than other cities do, so that does create a little bit of a problem unless you happen to hire somebody who's worked in the private sector, already participates in Social Security, then they view that as more of a tangible benefit than your average government employee. So again, that's probably more in the weeds than you wanted, but, but that is my short-ish answer for your question.
Yeah, I might suggest every year when you're doing your budget, you adjust that by an appropriate amount, and so it keeps it current, you don't have to have some jumps and get some big numbers, which is going to trigger questions when somebody looks at it.
And your point is good, that I, we have done it a little bit more on an ad hoc basis. It is a good idea for us to get on a system of doing it annually or something. So, yeah, thank you, Catherine.
Any other questions in public? Seeing none, we'll go back to council. Anyone have any questions for Chris or comments for Chris?
I have a comment. A great deal of this has to do with the decision to bring our building department in-house instead of as a contractor. And this is a way for us to maintain control over costs for residents in our community who want to make, who, who need building permits to make changes to their property. And with, with the employees in-house and their expenses in-house, it's something that we have the ability to control, whereas if it's a contract, it can go up at whatever rate it goes up. And so I just want to give a real vote of thanks to Chris and to staff for putting this together and taking this step as a part of that. And I move, I think we might as well take them both at the same time. So I move, I move the recommendation about job classifications, and I move we adopt the resolution.
I second.
Thank you. I also want to say that these are great for employee retention, too, the ability to get additional education and have it reimbursed, just the, the ability that he's built into this to keep good staff and to let them become more if they would like to choose. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded.
I'm sorry, I have a comment also. Thank you. I, I too am pleased that we're bringing it in-house, but I also want to point out that probably in evaluating salaries, most of us are interested in how do we measure up throughout with others? Are we at the high end or are we at the bottom of where we are? And we're not... And we're not at either end, we're pretty much in the middle. So we're comparable with what's going on, but we are not at the top end, and these are not numbers that you should be uncomfortable with. Those of us retired, these numbers are pretty interesting, looking back at what we retired at, but this is the way life is. It's, in fact, I thought I saw, read for California, that $100,000 is not a high figure for an income, perhaps in Orange County. So that's an interesting number when we would think of it as considerable, but we're in the middle anyway. We're comparable.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So we come to 9.3 fiscal years 2025-27 budget and work plan.
Okay. I'm going to keep my presentation on this brief, I think. This is the third budget meeting for the city council. We have at least two more left. We are talking today again about the next two-year budget cycle. So the city's budget cycle starts on July 1st and ends on June 30th. So because the city adopts a two-year budget, we're talking about the period between July 1st, 2025, and June 30th, 2027. At the same time, we adopt an 11-year capital improvement program to help us manage and spread those costs over time. The new 11-year capital improvement program will also begin on July 1st, 2025, but will run through June 30th of 2036. So we have had several meetings up to this point. We've talked about staffing, the insourcing of building and code enforcement staff. We've talked about law enforcement costs. We've talked about capital improvements. Today, we're going to focus on the city's significant work plan items for the next two-year period. And then at a meeting next week, on Wednesday at 2 o'clock, we will be talking about the general fund and the capital projects fund, and providing you a draft of Chapter 5 of the budget. And then we have an opportunity for additional meetings in June if we need them, but otherwise, we're planning to release the budget document the third week of June, and then recommend adoption on June 25th at your second meeting in June. Just to talk through kind of what we've done already, so our budget document is organized into eight chapters. You have now received five of those eight chapters. You received Chapters 1 through 3 in March, talking about the city as a whole, the city's staffing organization, and then going through some of the budget policies and budget practices. At your meeting in April, you received a draft of Chapter 8, which is the chapter that talks about capital improvement projects. And then on Friday, when we published this agenda packet, you received a draft of Chapter 7, the city's work plan. You will receive a draft of Chapter 5 this Friday when we publish the agenda packet, and then Chapters 4 and 6, as well as the transmittal letter, will be included in the complete draft of the budget released towards the middle of June. So the significant work plan chapter talks not about everything that the city will do, but it talks about some of what the city will do over the next two years, some of the bigger rocks, so to speak. The first couple of pages of that chapter talk about ongoing programs, and we've reformatted that and expanded the narrative a bit this year. So you'll see language in there about law enforcement services, about fire services. You'll learn about why the city is involved in building permitting, why the city is involved in solid waste management, some of the programs that we offer here at City Hall. There's some language in there about the senior mobility program. So the first couple pages are an introduction to some of those ongoing programs, projects, and services. And then you get to a table portion of the chapter where we identify, in this case, 21 individual projects plus a number of competitive procurement activities that the city plans to undertake over the course of the next two years. And then right after that, there's a small additional bit of narrative identifying work plan items that we know we need to take care of in upcoming budget cycles. So we've plugged them in as a placeholder so that they don't fall off our radar between now and the next two-year budget cycle. So rather than walk through every single item on there, I wanted to talk about two of them, one that we've talked about before, and one that I think is a pretty important part of what we're proposing for the next two years. And then there'll be an opportunity for public comments, and of course, we can talk about any item that's in that draft chapter. But I wanted to talk about significant work plan item number 17, which is the Fire Risk Reduction Community List. We talked about this, I want to say in August or September of last year, and we shared with you that the state publishes a Fire Risk Reduction Community List that recognizes cities that have completed certain best practices related to wildfire risk reduction. And at that point, we identified a desire to take the steps necessary to join that community list, and the city council voted to direct us to do so. We've included that work on this significant work plan item. We have already begun the work, so it's well underway at this point. But I wanted to call your attention to one thing that, in my mind, has pretty materially changed since we talked to you about it at first. And that's that when we talked to you about it at first, the application window had not been published for the 2026 iteration of the list, but based on what the state had done in the past, we assumed that that application window would open April 1st of 2026. Subsequent to that discussion, in the city council's direction to pursue inclusion on this list, the state advanced that deadline from April 1st, 2026, to October 1st of 2025. So the application window actually opens July 1st and closes on October 1st, much sooner, obviously, than we had intended. At the staff level, we are still committed to working as hard as we can to meet that deadline, but I wanted to make you aware of the rather significant change and just say that we are doing everything we can to get to there. But one of the pieces that we have to tackle is the update of the safety element. Because of the SEQA process and because of CAL FIRE's role in reviewing and commenting on the safety element, we may not be able to hit that October 1st deadline. Right now, it still looks possible, but it looks possible under best-laid plans, everything going according to plan. So I'm just putting it out there that we're going to continue to work on those best practices, regardless of whether we find ourselves on the 2026 list. We will still have done things that are best practices for fire risk reduction, so there's no loss in that sense. It may just be a timing issue whether we're able to actually get ourselves on the formal list, or whether we would need to apply for the subsequent list. The other program I wanted to talk about, and this is something new, this is something that staff's proposing, I'm interested in hearing council feelings on it, but because we find ourselves in a budget position that provides some degree of flexibility, we are recommending creating a public safety grant program that would, we envision it as probably an ongoing activity, but the initial focus of that grant program would be in providing financial incentives for private property owners and businesses to do two things, to implement the forthcoming Zone Zero defensible space regulations, which I think we've touched on in the past, I know I've shared some information with the council. But the state will be adopting regulations that, in broad strokes, will require those 545 buildings within the very high fire hazard severity zone to clear an area five feet around the structure of vegetation, or at least of most vegetation. So they're talking about things like no trees, no bushes, no grass, no wood mulch, some limited potted plants, maybe some limited, single spaced apart plants, but it would be a significant amount of landscape improvement required to comply. Existing homes would have three years to comply. New development would be required to comply starting on January 1st. These regulations haven't been adopted yet, but they are on track because of an order from the governor's office to be adopted by January 1st. So within Laguna Woods, we don't expect it to really relate to new development, but it will create a very real financial burden, particularly for Third Mutual, who has the totality of those residential buildings in the very high fire hazard severity zone, but it'll also affect the Golden Rain Foundation because of their clubhouse facilities, and it will affect the El Toro Water District because of some of their facilities in that zone. So we're looking to put aside some money to assist those property owners with the compliance efforts, recognizing that it is a very significant and costly compliance requirement on a fairly tight timeframe. I think I've shared before that when the state talks about the phasing in of this requirement, they talk about, well, you have three years to do it, so that's a lot of time. Three years might be a lot of time if you, the individual homeowner, only had to clear the area around your home. It is, I think, a totally different discussion when it relates to a mutual who has to clear around 545 units. Much different dilemma that I don't think is being fully appreciated at the state level, but nonetheless, I see this train barreling down the tracks. It's going to create some financial burdens, on top of financial burdens that, in particular, HOAs already have with some of the requirements to remove or turf. So we're looking to set aside some money to support those efforts, and then also to set aside some money to assist businesses with registering and integrating their security cameras with the Orange County Sheriff's Department's Connect Orange County program. This allows businesses to either just register their cameras so that the sheriff's department knows where they are, or register the cameras and then install a piece of equipment that gives the sheriff's department the ability to access those camera feeds in the event of an emergency, with the obvious benefit being that if the sheriff's department is sending deputies to a call for service, it is better for those deputies to have eyes on what's going in the structure before they run into the structure. And so that process is fairly simple to integrate cameras, but it does come at a cost. There's a piece of equipment that's required. That equipment, the cost for the equipment varies based on the number of cameras that a business has. And I would imagine that in most situations, a business is also going to have to hire some sort of IT professional to install and configure the equipment. So because there's a cost to all of that, we're also looking to put aside some money to assist with those efforts, with the overarching idea being that both of these things benefit Laguna Woods as a whole, right? Wildfire compliance helps everybody. Fires spread from structure to structure, we just have to look at what happened in LA recently to see that. And then, you know, our residents shop and dine and traffic businesses within Laguna Woods. If there's something that happens in one of those businesses, if the sheriff's department has eyes in the business, has the ability to monitor those camera feeds, that's a net public safety positive. So again, the idea is that this grant program would evolve over time, but as we looked at priorities to select for the first two-year cycle of this program, this is what we think would allow us to make a measurable benefit, measurable improvement in local public safety. So I wanted to talk about that because that is different than what we've done in the past. But again, that's Item 21, the Fire Risk Reduction Community List was Item 17. There's a lot of other items in there. Some of them are carryovers from previous years. Some of those are state law requirements. I'll give you an example of that, that even though we just updated our mobility element of the general plan, we're required to update the mobility element again to comply with truck routing requirements related to warehouse distribution facilities. It is not remotely relevant to Laguna Woods, at least at this point in time, but we have a requirement to comply with state law. We need to comply with it, so we've included those type of things on the work plan as well. And you'll see in the future outlook that we're soon going to be required to create a streamlined permitting process for hydrogen fueling stations. That's another requirement of state law. We have never received an application for a hydrogen fueling station, but the state apparently believes that our process needs to be streamlined and made more efficient. So there's a lot of that in there as well. But then there are things like the two items I just talked about that are trying to do some good here locally, and that are of the city's own, you know, creation and initiative. So having said that, there's an opportunity for public comments today. There's no formal action required. I'm happy to just have, you know, council feedback on what we've presented in the draft chapter today. You're welcome to give me formal direction if you'd like, but otherwise, we can just have a conversation. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor for any public comments.
Yes, come on to the, come on up.
Public comments are open.
The comments.
Thank you for sticking with us.
My name is Marcus, and I've been asked by the Golden Rain Foundation to be an advisor as far as the emergency response plans that we need to look at. One of the things that I've been looking at, basically, is the software that's currently being used during an emergency. I understand that Onself is part of the program here in Laguna Woods. There are other programs out there as well. One is D4H, which was developed in Ireland. My background is with aviation. I was the emergency response coordinator for Swissair, Sabina Belgian World Airlines, and Austrian. And I went through the response to the accident of the Swissair 111 flight of Peggy's Cove in September 2nd of 1998. And we learned a lot from that moment on, especially in how to communicate with the survivors, the people that lost loved ones. Delta Airlines was one of our partners, and what really struck me is that in the first 24 hours after the accident, where 229 passengers and crew died, we had 22,000 calls related to Swissair in 24 hours that was handled by Delta Airlines in their care center. Part of reservations now kicked over to respond to the calls. We have a village of 18,000 people. We only have a few volunteers, maybe 40 at the most. I think it's extremely important that we have the ability to set up a call center, and it doesn't have to be in Laguna Woods, it can be anywhere in the country, that can answer calls from people looking for loved ones. Finding out who really is missing, that's another thing you find when you have a major disaster, people are missing. And through the call centers, and you can have trackers that look for people. There are first responders that can be trained, I think the VMS people, there are 700 of them, they should get some training to be able to respond immediately. Now, many of them won't be here if it's an earthquake or a fire, they may be taking care of their own problems, but we need to be able to bring in caregivers. There are organizations that provide that. They're mainly used, you know, by airlines to expand. There are about 10,000 volunteers worldwide that are trained that can be brought in. You wouldn't bring people in from the Philippines that work here, but during the LA fires, some of them kicked in. Some of them were flown into Maui when that was on fire to help. I think that kind of preparedness, the human element, dealing with people that are traumatized, is very important. So I've been trying to figure out how much our software can do here, and I've been told that... that I need to go to you because what we have is, what, 31 officers or security people in the community? They can't do this by themselves. So we need to look outside, and there are possibilities where a call center can be set up where you don't even pay until you use it. And there's a charge, automatic $5,000 fee to put that together. I think we should be able to know exactly where every person that's a first responder is. We need to be able to communicate in a tree form to be able to work with the community. I don't want to take all your time, but I think...
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Marcus.
The person that I can speak to would be to set up a meeting with you.
Your public comment...
If that's possible.
Time has expired, sir. Sorry.
Yeah, we can certainly have a conversation without getting, again, too into it. Reunification efforts are typically managed by the American Red Cross. The city contracts for police and fire services with other agencies, they have their own kind of software and abilities to handle this. The 911 services has the capacity to respond to many, many calls. And I know the American Red Cross has the ability to set up large call centers. So I would need to understand a little bit more what you're talking about, but we don't have, with respect to software, the village's software is separate from the city's. We don't share any of the same software. We have our own, like, emergency management-type software, as do our first responder partners, but I'm not entirely clear on what you're asking, but I'm definitely happy to get together and have a conversation about how, you know, we might be able to...
Mainly, I'm looking at the human aspect. People that need to, that, people that are handicapped, people that go through trauma that need attention, Good Samaritans. I mean, there was a program, I understand, here back in 2013 that already had helicopters landing, you know, at the golf courses to pick up people that needed to be transported. I think that was under Commander Moy, and all this has disappeared, from what I understand.
Again, I think we're getting a little off topic since this is a budget and work plan item, but I would say the village has its own emergency preparedness functions, and so to the extent that you are unhappy with what Laguna Woods Village might be doing for preparedness purposes, and Tim Moy was your former security director, so he was a Laguna Woods Village employee, he was a VMS employee, I would suggest that you talk to your boards or talk to your security director about that. But again, I'm happy to have a conversation with you offline.
Yeah, I was told to check in here, which is...
I'm not sure why you were told to check in here, but maybe there's something I'm not understanding about the question. We can definitely talk if you'll give Yoli your contact information. I'd be happy to have a conversation with you and try to...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We do participate in a greater, along with El Toro Water, and there is a site. So if there were an emergency, we're a part of that group. So, but it sounds like you're talking about possibly people on site here as opposed to handling the overall danger. The overall danger, we are in a program, and we are with the county, with the sheriff, and they have a call center, and we have an emergency response group. It's called We Rock, and they have a site, and so that's all taken care of. But I don't think that's what you're referring to, so maybe that is a conversation for you.
Yeah, we can definitely have a conversation. Go ahead and give Yoli your contact information.
I'll do it.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking around for the whole meeting. Appreciate it.
So did you get the recommendation you needed to...
Yeah, if there's no other public comments or council comments, I just, you know, this is just an opportunity to weigh in on the work plan, but if you're comfortable with it, we'll continue down this path and, you know, get to the finish line soon enough.
Keep up the good work, Chris.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we come to City Council Reports and Comments. This is the time and place for members of the City Council to provide reports on meetings attended, including but not limited to meetings on regional boards and entities to which they've been appointed to represent the city and meetings attended at the expense of the city pursuant to California government code. Members of the City Council may also make other comments and announcements. So Coastal Green Belt Authority is first. Mayor Protem McCarrick.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I did attend the Coastal Green Belt meeting for this month. I don't actually have a report, but I did extend an invitation to Laguna Canyon Foundation for someone to come and make a presentation to the council. So I'm waiting for a response back, whether they can come to the June meeting or the July meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. And the Orange County Fire Authority, there was no board meeting this month, but operations did meet, and there's a video. If Chris could go ahead and play it, please.
Yeah, give me just one moment here.
Hi, I'm Fire Captain Tanglin, and this is the OCSA quarterly size up. In this edition of the OCSA quarterly size up, we will look at emergency response statistics, highlight a few of the incidents, training, and our involvement in the community. We'll also focus on a significant operational enhancement for the quarter covering February through April 2025.
Serving Orange County from the canyons to the coast, the OCSA is your all-hazard fire department, and this is the quarterly size up.
In the past quarter, your OCSA firefighters responded to 44,251 incidents, which is 578 more incidents than last year over the same period. To break it down, that's 515 fires, 11,365 all-hazard calls such as traffic collisions, remote rescues, technical rescues, hazardous materials, and various service calls, and 32,371 EMS calls. Let's take a closer look at this busy quarter and revisit some of the calls and training our firefighters responded to. On Thursday, March 13th, swiftwater rescue teams were called to a water rescue in San Juan Capistrano involving a car that was swept downriver in Tribuco Creek. Due to anticipated storms, additional swiftwater rescue teams were prepositioned throughout the county and were deployed in addition to our helicopter. Firefighters found the driver out of his car hanging onto a tree on their arrival. The rescue was challenging due to the dangerous rushing water and the difficult access. With precision lowering of a helicopter paramedic rescuer, the victim was hoisted and lowered to the bank of the creek where firefighter paramedics awaited him. On Monday, March 31st, Engine 46 was extinguishing a vehicle fire in a gas station parking lot in the city of Stanton. While operating at the scene, a second separate car ran into sheriff's department vehicles blocking the fire scene and rolled. Engine 46 quickly assessed the situation and requested additional resources for a traffic collision cut and rescue. Firefighters successfully extinguished the fire while extricating the driver who rolled the car. Shortly after 2:30 PM on Saturday, April 12th, firefighters responded to a commercial fire in the city of Irvine. Due to the significant volume of fire, Battalion 5 utilized a defensive strategy where firefighters fought the blaze from the outside with large water streams from multiple ladder trucks and from the ground. It took a total of three hours to get the massive fire under control, but thanks to our firefighters' quick and strategic response, no one was injured. Also, on April 12th, the OCSA air operations had a milestone moment when they conducted their first rescue with one of the new Firehawks. The OCSA air operations crew was requested by the Laguna Beach Fire Department for a person who had fallen off rocks along the rugged coast. After the successful rescue, the Firehawk was called on again for a rescue in San Juan Capistrano on Wednesday, April 23rd. Firefighter paramedics from Engine 7 and other units located an injured mountain biker and initiated care. Due to the remote location, the patient was safely hoisted into the helicopter for transport to a hospital. While there are no vegetation fires in Orange County during this reporting period, firefighters are conducting their required annual RT-130 training in preparation for the upcoming peak fire season. And as we finish the operational update, we are happy to share a reunion with one of the thousands of patients we served and saved this quarter. In February, the crew of Truck 76 in Santa Ana reunited with a two-year-old boy whose life they saved during a choking emergency a few weeks earlier. The crew was happy to meet with the boy and his family, and even gifted their former patient a new toy fire truck and junior firefighter helmet. Which brings us to community corner. This quarter, we spearheaded 70 school visits and 327 community events, including, on March 2nd, firefighters across our service region went out to schools to read to children during an annual event that connects us with our community, teaches children basic safety tips, and begins the recruiting process for the next generation of OCSA personnel. In Mission Viejo, on April 19th, firefighters from Engine 31 took part in the very first Best Buddies Friendship Walk at Tribuco Hills High School. This inaugural event brought the community together to celebrate and support inclusion for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. On April 26th in Rancho Mission Viejo, Engine and Truck 56 attended the annual Earth Day event where they had a full day of educating attendees on safety and disaster preparedness. The kids were also treated to giveaways and timed with the firefighters. And finally, on March 15th, we hosted the best-attended open house in agency history with more than 7,500 community members. That wraps up this quarter's operational report. And remember, OCSA is more than an all-risk agency. We are your all-risk agency. We are your first responders, and above all else, we are your fire department.
Take a breath, hope is on the way. Thank you. They were also here for our Earth Day. They made a presentation to the foundation and to the Garden Villa Association. So they've been very active here, and we appreciate all their help. And that's my report. We have another board meeting tomorrow. So...
Sure. I just want to make a quick comment. My family was visiting in the middle of April, and I took three grandkids to the local fire department at the Presio de Valencia, and they were, they really, the firefighter there, I had it arranged, pre-arranged, and they really gave them a tour and gave them all this tour, the memorabilia. And they thought the grandma was great.
Great. Yeah, they're really impressive over there. They all are, but... Okay, the Orange County Library Advisory Board.
The Orange County Library Advisory Board meets tomorrow, so actually, we haven't had our meeting. I do want to point out, though, all the things that the library is doing, from having presentations right here to having authors. In fact, one of our authors is Ramish's daughter, who's now become an international famous author. And so the library continues to do the programs that are so outstanding, including reading readiness and offering programs for people who live nearby. And I think there'll be schools, some of these charter schools will start using probably, I know the schools already are using the library and people over here, by the way, for homework help. So that's already being offered, so I bet that's going to increase.
Okay, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District, Councilmember Lee.
We had a meeting on April 17th. We discussed, oh, is it me? Okay. They have 10 vehicles that are 20 years old. So this year, they replaced five, and they plan to replace other five next year from their saving. And we discussed the district budget for 2025 to 2026, and '26 to '27. We had a separate budget workshop, half-day workshop. We also discussed the district benefit assessment. It has been pretty quiet because of the weather was cool. We don't have that much mosquito activity. The April activity report shows in Laguna Woods, we only had one service requested year to date compared to a total of 500 in Orange County in total. And we also have one service request, the rats-related problem, service requested, only one incident compared to about 360 total in Orange County. And also, we have an inspection inside service was done, year to date is 10 compared to 5,500 in Orange County. So we've been pretty quiet, but I think the activity will start in May. Now the weather is warm, they are going to start hiring 70% of their seasonal workers. Thank you. And our next meeting, we already had it actually on the 15th of May.
Hey, thank you. San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency, Councilmember Connors.
The big deal for us this month was our budget. The toll roads continues to increase with the number of fast-track subscribers, the number of transactions, and the amount of toll revenues. Of course, our costs go up commensurate with the amount of activity. There's more processing, there are more staff members required, there are more credit card fees, and more technology that we have to purchase to account for new customers. But nonetheless, we remain, our revenue is rising faster than our costs. This year, we began providing back office support for the San Bernardino County Transportation Commission for the toll lanes on Interstate 10. And we handle all of their tolling transactions and all of their customer service calls. And in that area also, the amount that they pay us to do that is marginally greater than the amount that it costs us to do that. So the more we can leverage our outstanding computer systems and back office equipment, the better we do. Our budget always includes a 2% increase in tolls. The board has made a policy to do that unless we decide not to do that, but normally, there's something that is approved very strongly by the bond rating agencies and our bond holders. So it's a sign of our commitment to fiscal responsibility. And we're continuing to pay down our initial construction bonds ahead of their time. Each time we pay down a million dollars worth of bonds, we save about a million dollars in future interests. So it's been, we've been very financially prudent, and they're in strong fiscal condition.
Thank you. Okay, South Orange County Watershed Management, is there a report?
Actually, we just had our agenda meeting, but I, two things. Number one, I serve on LAFCO, and we are doing the municipal service review for the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control. We just got it, so I'll be looking at that. The, as to, and I also took a trip, and I have a slide presentation, which I'm not sure, how busy is our June meeting? I hope not quite this late.
No, we can do it in June.
Okay, I have, took a trip to the state watershed project, so I was able to view the sites, reservoir, proposed reservoir area, the delta, the Oroville Dam. I'm trying to think what all we did do. It was pretty informative on the state water project, so I'll give a report on that. It's the future meeting.
Is that the end of your report?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any other reports or comments? No? Okay, seeing none. I guess we can adjourn this meeting until Wednesday, May 28th, 2025.
May 28th.
Meeting adjourned.
May 28th. I have to use the restroom.